Hi Marcia. So is this, is this an issue just with me or is it with, uh, it's, what do you suggest we do? Because I can waive my appearance and go ahead, you know, there's no reason to hold up the board meeting just because of me. You got a four, you got the other four there. But if it's a problem with, uh,
So we can hear you, we can hear you, you just can't hear us.
Oh, really?
It's, it's, uh, everyone.
Oh, my gosh.
Director Jorgens right now?
Very remotely muffled. I can hear him muffled in the background of the phone coming your phone.
Getting sound out through Zoom, but the speakers are just coming through Zoom, so that helps. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. There would be a lot of feedback. Director Romer, can you hear me now?
I can. There's a little bit of feedback, but you're comprehensible. Hello?
She must have.
Did you hear me?
Yeah, we're trying to think if we can, yeah, yeah, you can use.
So I should, should I mute?
You can turn the volume down a lot.
Can you, you know, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
We can't hear you, Mike.
Yeah, now we can't hear him.
Well, let me just, uh,
Oh, excellent.
Just turn the speakers down.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Marcia, can you hear me now?
Confirmed.
Good.
Turn the speakers on the auditorium down a lot. There are only three people in here.
Let me know if I need to adjust my volume.
Sounds much better. But we still have to get it.
Mm-hmm. Correct. This is why the sound has to go through their mixers.
Otherwise.
Correct.
You could just stop dropping in our speakers completely. Make it just listen. Then the sound. Oh, okay, nice. Speaker, speaker's here.
Testing. This is a test. Director Romer, okay, can you hear me?
I can hear audio, but that's too much, too much feedback.
Arm testing. Receiving, experiencing feedback, sorry. I can hear myself in the ears.
Mike, can you hear who?
Can you hear me?
I can hear audio, but it's, uh, it's a little distorted.
Okay, it's just, it's distorted. Are you hearing it twice or are you just? Okay, let me go see.
It's kind of muffled.
Maybe we should talk and sit here. Can you hear me better now, Mike? Is it muffled?
That's a little bit, there's a little bit of feedback there. Echo.
She's working on it. Mike, I'm just talking so that she can hear somebody talk on the speakers, so I'm just gonna make things up and.
Hey Craig, that sounds pretty good.
Sounds pretty good.
That's coming through okay.
Okay, he says it's coming through okay now.
The problematic child.
What?
It seems to be working.
Okay, it looks like it's working now.
Oh, good. Excellent. Congratulations. Thank you.
You can keep going. I'll click through the slides. I mean, can't be that hard.
Is it okay to proceed without Marcia?
Do you know how to make her slides go forward?
Afraid to. I'm afraid to. Craig's not afraid to, but I am.
I'm afraid to try anything. I have live monkey brains, but other than that, I'm not afraid. Marcia, we got it to work.
It's working.
Thank you, Grace. Good job.
Okay, announcements.
Do we, do we, don't we have to ask questions about, um,
It's on here.
Oh, but I thought we had to have things that are comments about things that are on the agenda first.
That's, um,
Did you proceed?
We did not proceed.
Okay, so, um, we haven't resumed?
No.
Okay, so the time is 7:22?
And we're now resuming?
And we will now resume?
Okay.
And so, um, did we finish the pledge of allegiance?
So we are on to announcements.
Thank you. So item 2.1, brief information only reports related to meetings attended by district expense?
None.
None?
None.
Questions and informational comments from board members and staff? None? Communications received? We did not receive any communications? Fire chief updates? We'll go to the finance report.
Good evening, directors. I have a brief finance report. Uh, we'll start with the strike team reimbursement. Uh, the strike team receivable for fiscal year 2024 is still $891, which represents one invoice outstanding. The estimated for fiscal year 2025, the receivable is 1.2 million. We've received $492,000 in payments, so the net receivable outstanding is $785,000. The fiscal year '25 number represents estimated strike team activity to date and does not, does not include the recent assignments down in Southern California. Next page, please. Tunnel East Bay Hills financial update. The project budget is $6.3 million. Uh, we have invoiced to CAL FIRE through September 30th, $5.1 million, and received payments of $5.1 million, so there's no outstanding, outstanding receivable with CAL FIRE. We have expenses paid but not yet invoiced of $877,000, so the total expenses outstanding are $877,000. The expenses for fourth quarter '24 will be submitted by the end of January. Total expenses to date are $6 million, which represent 94.8% of the total budget. Treasury bill update. The district now has $24,815,000 invested in treasury bills. The treasury bill maturities are listed below, and the staff will continue to project cash flows to determine the amount of reinvestment available when treasury bills mature.
Those should be gonna be going.
Other items, the new MOU, medical, dental, and HSA benefit changes were implemented on the January 10th, 2025 payroll. New MOU salary changes will be implemented on the February 10th, '25 payroll, and W-2s and 1099s will be completed in January. That concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Excuse me, I have a question. Uh, hi Mary, this is Director Danziger. For the East Bay Hills, um, finance report, do those numbers include the, um, overhead admin fees that we, that we get?
Yes, they do. They're part of the budget. They've been built into the budget.
They've been built into the budget.
Oh, it's built in, okay. Thank you.
And I'll have just one. So, so between the, between the overtime for the, um, the firework we do and the, uh, and East Bay Hills, we have about a million and a half, million six outstanding in things that we've already paid for, but we have not gotten the money back. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is Director Jack. I do have a question. Uh, on page 27, there's, it shows the receivables of 220, it's kind of hard to read it, 224,000. Question is, how is the accounting of that? Since a lot of that is uncollectible items?
I'm sorry, which page are you referring to? I'm sorry, which page are you referring to?
So they're not on the only as collected. Thank you.
Any further questions? Human resource update?
Good evening, directors. So tonight I have a brief HR update. So first off is the fire marshal. I'm happy to announce that our new fire marshal will be starting on Tuesday, January twenty-first. So you will be meeting Casey Irving at the next board meeting.
Could you tell us her name, please?
Casey Irving.
Can you spell it?
It's C A S E Y and last name Irving, I R V I N G.
Irving, okay.
And for firefighter, paramedic, I have released a recruitment on January sixth, and it will run through February fourteenth, and this recruitment will establish an eligibility list. And finally, a recruitment for fuels mitigation specialist was opened yesterday, and it will run through February twelfth. We have one vacancy to fill.
Is that one of the grant funded or?
Yes, it's one of the limited term grant funded positions.
And that's. When does that grant run out?
Yeah, three thirty-one, twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Okay, and the firefighter, paramedic recruitment. Can that be laterals or as well as is not lateral?
So we're just hiring. The recruitment is for firefighter, paramedic, trainee.
Oh, trainee?
Yeah.
Okay. So normally laterals would not apply. I mean, they could, right?
They could.
But normally.
Most likely.
Okay. How many vacancies?
For firefighter, paramedic, we have, we've got five right now.
Five.
And have we received any responses to the?
Applications? Yeah, I have seventeen as of today.
Okay.
Or not for plenty of filling all five? Right? We normally don't, right?
I'm not sure. Well, it would depend on how many slots that we would get in an academy, so that would be something to consider.
But these are trainees, correct?
Right, yeah. So they would go through the fire academy.
Okay.
Do we, at this point, do we know where the next academy is gonna be?
I'm not sure about that.
Don't know yet.
Mm-hmm, don't know.
Deal. Okay. Okay.
Unless there's any other questions, that concludes my update.
The first part of your faculty, the December. Twenty twenty-four. Majority of staff, you know, based on the holidays, was gone, taking vacation, but we still got seventy-nine inspections or assessments. We still issued some citations and careers were really little bit trying to close out the remaining cases and the huge number of cases we still have pending in the system. Like to move to the, unless there's any questions on that, move to the urine review. From twenty-two to twenty-four, we obviously see a decrease in the number of complaints for DHP. Actually, how did the baymen jumped up from previous years? And I think that's because we were targeting other areas we haven't been to before. So when you go to a neighbor, neighborhood, they're likely to flow, hey, what about my neighbor behind me or the neighbor to the side? So that usually we see an uptick in complaints through that. If you notice from twenty-two, twenty-three, our number of assessments were in twenty-two with thirty-five hundred, twenty-three was twenty-nine hundred. And then we dipped down this year at twenty-seven hundred. Reason for that is this year we did not focus on our evacuation routes and evacuation routes. You know, that's another couple hundred inspections right there. As we do, traditionally, we did track them down. Basically, fishing pole on a vehicle to hit the trees that were under fifteen feet rule and also snapping photos of any vegetation. So that is why you see the difference in those numbers. And then the other area I wanted to highlight was our chipping. We went from eleven days in twenty-two, we were bringing the program online, twenty-nine days in twenty-three, but seventy-nine in twenty-four. The real reason for that was there was such a need for the chipping that we started as our crews were out inspecting and our chipper was on the fuel break. We hired a contract crew to come in and continue the chipping while our crews were busy. And then once the crews, my crews transitioned from inspectors, we were able to get the chipper off the fuel break. And our crews are out now chipping two to three basically.
Does that include the Arinda ones that we manage?
I want to keep them separate. So I can just report on ours and what we're counting.
With using our equipment? Using only our equipment?
Yes, this is just our chipper and not.
Okay.
So how many of those roughly were that were in the summer, which we didn't use to have? Quite a few? That's great. So so we got a lot of a lot more done because we funded it for the summer.
What we traditionally see is an uptake with the inspections. The inspections drive the last of chipping. It's really nice to, when we hit a neighborhood and issue those pre-citations and present the education when the residents, you know, they're. It's really nice to say also, here's the flyer, here's the QR code. You can sign up for our chipping program, meaning we're checking.
That's great. So it was fifty additional days, though, in twenty twenty-four that the chipper was out. That's substantial.
Increase. Now, that's ten weeks.
Yeah, that's a lot. I just said a lot.
Obviously, in twenty-four, we had two hundred per move holes about a hundred and forty. Notice the violations and then the zones are, it's a pretty standard that we see here. The number one violation. The next page is the existing citations. We still have outstanding, and these are all.
Occupied parcels, so doing district funded lean work becomes extremely tricky and time consuming. You know, we tried it on a couple properties back in twenty-one, I think it was, and it just getting the trespass warrant, getting PD out on scene, keeping the property owner out of the way of the crews was extremely time consuming and very challenging. So what we do if it is a occupied parcel, we just continue to cite them. We get the fines through the franchise tax board.
So at what point do we submit the fines for the franchise? Because once you get them, it's probably hard to refund them, right? So at what point do we send them off to the franchise task board?
I believe it. Go ahead, Marcia.
So the after the third delinquent notice is issued, then it is sent to the franchise tax board. So you have the thirty days, then you have sixty-one days, and you have ninety-one days, and at the hundred and twenty-first day, that's when they're gonna send it off to the franchise tax board.
So a lot of these started back in April, so. Been more than four months.
How many make it there to the franchise? I mean, how?
They all go in a big file to the franchise tax board, and then when the collections are made through, you know, those.
Taxes.
Exactly, then we will receive a payment. However much we can collect.
Wow. So we're actually, because often I know when they actually do the work, we often have been lenient and given it back, but it sounds like we're just collecting the money now.
Yes, sir. Once it reaches that point where it's gone to the franchise tax board, we do not. If they have anything that hasn't gone and they've done the work, then we will waive those fines, but once it goes there, we don't waive that.
Do we send them a really big notice that says that we are going to collect it that way?
Yes, sir, we do.
Wow. That's, that's a big hammer.
Yes, sir, it is. We've had individuals come into the office, and I didn't know this, and when we bring out their pre citation and every citation, we walk them through it and they're, you know, if they had taken the time to read the notice, it would have been there for them.
But this is just the fines that are going to the franchise tax board. They aren't remediating.
Correct.
Issue. And once we send it to the franchise tax board, do we continue citations?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They have complied, we continue with the citation.
Because it seems to be, you know, the last one you send. Maybe you should send a little FedEx box or something that says, it's the real deal, dude. You know, this is the last time, and then you're gonna pay the bill whether you like it or not. Yeah, I mean, something that's a little bit more in your face than a letter.
Yes.
The notice is red, big red, delinquent, and they get lots of notices before that happens, and the final one is big and red.
Big and red, okay.
Can I just suggest that maybe, I don't think I've ever seen one. I don't know if we have. Maybe for next, next meeting, maybe you can just put one in the packet?
Yes, sir.
That'd be great to just see that, that final.
Final notice, because.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I would too. It's kind of, you kind of hate to. You'd like to think people wouldn't go that far because it's kind of a lose-lose. You still have to do the work and they're gonna pay. Some of these were like almost ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Real money.
Yeah.
Next slide, please, Marcia.
I have a couple of questions on this. Maybe we should do those now?
Yes.
Okay, I know I've asked this before, but e-occupancy? You know, half the year, we still have nine fail. Are those like minor infractions at this point?
Yes, sir.
Nope.
I've worked or been in communication with the superintendents for both Maraga and Arinda, and they're working on it. They have just about everything done.
Okay.
Or it's, hey, we're updating the maps and there'll be, you know, the evacuations for the doors in the classroom, and they'll be there. Maraga sent them to me for review, approved them, and they're working to get them out. So it's a lot of education and a lot of time and effort, but we are almost there.
Okay, great. And for the Home Hardening Grant Program, I have, we have the numbers here for twenty twenty-four. Again, for the for the next agenda, maybe I'd like to see just accumulative numbers of, 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 you know, of deliveries and residents served since we've been doing the program.
Yes.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And I have. I want also.
Yeah.
All right. So I just wanted also to let you know that the chief and I met with the head of the Arinda School Board on Tuesday of last week, something. And they they have this wild area outside of Wagner Ranch that we found, I guess they finally figured out which part they own, which part they have but nodes. And they were concerned it was gonna cost them lots of money, you know, like hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars to fix all of that so that their insurance company would let them actually use the property. Otherwise, they weren't letting anybody into the property. And the chief came up with a really good idea to to apply for a Measure X grant and see if we could get, you know, our local tax dollars to help pay for some of that remediation. And we also talked about things they can do to, you know, cut down the eucalyptus trees rather than, and rather than hauling them away, they can just limb them up or take the limbs off and leave the stumps there, you know, the logs there, rather than having to spend the money to, you know, bring in cranes and mess up the ground and haul them away. So I think they were happy with the outcome that, you know, they could both spend less money, even if they did have to do all the work, but also potentially get somebody else to pay for part of the work also. So they were, they ended up being very happy. The chief is very creative.
Is that part of e-occupancy?
No, I'm just saying, but that's just the interaction we have with the, it was part of the things they hadn't gotten done, you know, was in their, in their, so they were getting fines for that or about to get fines for that.
Director Hassler, it wasn't part of the e-occupancy, but we had received a complaint.
Ah, okay.
So we went out, noticed that, yes, there were violations there, and the district does a lot of prescribed fire and pile burning out there through Dennis Rain as our prescribed fire coordinator. So this is a different portion of it, and that was one of the other ideas that we had. If we could get Measure X to create a fuel break in the areas that we're not currently in, we can move into those other areas to do prescribed fire and pile burning to maintain it.
That is a win.
They were very happy with the interactions they had with Dennis and the other inspectors and things that have been out there. So good. It's a good relationship.
Yeah, I just like, I mean, I'm hearing this for the first time here. I'm on the board of directors there, and if you're gonna do that again, I'd like to be there too.
Yes.
If, you know, so.
Can you open up the inspection map?
You see it. Well, there we go.
Mm-hmm. There's a little bit of a delay.
Directors, this is the inspections that were completed for twenty twenty-four. So the big groups of green areas, those were our targeted inspections based on the fire pathways entering our community. The other areas that you see are junipers, so those were the juniper inspections. And then there's large parcels that were also inspected as part of the large parcel to make sure that they're compliant with their fuel breaks requirements. Some of the yellow that you see are still areas where we've identified we've needed to do inspection, but it's maybe behind a lock gate or it's, there's some, something that's prohibiting the inspector from getting there, so we're working, leaving messages, sending notices through the mail, leaving business cards to try to get to those areas. And then the red is properties that are still in violation.
Director Jack's question.
Yes, sir.
The human resource requirements to staff these kinds of activities, the inspections largely, and follow-up. Do we have adequate resources or do we get sort of having to deal with the complaints or whatever it is?
Sir, I think we have the, for the amount of supervision that the employees take, the vehicles, the IT and everything, I think we're where we need to be with our number of inspectors. It's constant training with them, getting them to understand the codes and to be able to articulate that in a manner that our residents will understand it. It would be great if we had twenty inspectors, but then we increase the workload of supervisors. What vehicles do they drive? Do they have computers? Where do we sit them? The staff comes in in the morning, they do basically a tailgate safety session, a briefing of what they're doing for the day, and then they go out and then they come back. So they do need that desk space for a little bit in the mornings and the afternoon to file their paperwork and stuff like that. So if we bring on more inspectors, that's just something that we would have to consider. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
So can we give them motorcycles to ride or something, mopeds instead of trucks? I'm serious. I mean, it doesn't.
I would be worried with those staff members on little mopeds or something like that, sir.
But little handy cars, whatever.
Need a little, I mean, even a little electric vehicle or something. They don't need super sophisticated, you know, like a battalion chief ride or utility that has the lights, has the radio. It needs to be identified, you know, as a fire district a vehicle because they're in, they are in uniform, and we've had situations where the staff has gone into a neighborhood when our vehicles were out of service, and we were renting one for a few days that, you know, law enforcement was called because a concerned neighbor didn't know who this person was, even though they're in in uniform. So the marked vehicle definitely helps out.
Maybe we should keep some of our used vehicles that we replace that don't have to be, you know, used for emergencies to let them.
Our, the fleet, the prevention staff use those little Ford Rangers. They're on their last leg, and we're, we're keeping them running, but at some point, probably in the next couple of years, we're really gonna have to look at what do we replace those with.
Okay.
Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break Project?
So we were quickly drawing to a close on the Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break. We completed, it's just about completed. We're doing the remaining pile burning, a couple hundred piles left. We have Crew Twelve working. The grant will be completed by the beginning of March. We have to have the closeout. Last day of the fuel break is March fifteenth. Everything will be done by that. I'm working with Mary right now to do the fourth quarter for last year and get that. I'm working with Mary right now to do the fourth quarter for last year and get that billing cycle in. Our project coordinator is out walking the project right now. So we get very accurate GIS mapping to be able to report to the state. Any additional acres that we've treated, and I anticipate we will have hopefully 100, maybe 200 additional acres that we were able to treat that we originally planned. We also have our environmental consultant out doing post-treatment surveys on the fuel break.
Home Hardening Grant Program?
Uh, is Chief Lambert online?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Directors, I'm Lucas Lambert. I'll be giving tonight's Home Hardening Grant Program update. Year-to-date for our fiscal year since July 1st, we have, we have 254 residents that have applied for the grant. The number of orders shipped to the homeowners is 212. Total expenditures for this fiscal year is 121,738. As we continue this program, we are monitoring the responsiveness that occurs when we send our notifications and advising and, and tracking trends with analytics based on time of year and notifications sent. The latest one that occurred on the 13th, just a couple of days ago. And we have seen with, in light of what I believe, all the recent fires going on here down south, we've seen an increase in the requests in the report.
So in addition to the gutter guards, which I assume are the, bar far the most expensive part of that, how many people use the custom or just big rolls of screen versus the little circles that we, we give away?
Yes, sir. You know, yeah, like, like you said, so we see, we see quite an increase in the, in the vents, the mesh. We are, so, so the, the little holes or the vent covers for the mesh, we, we are constantly advertising that. I don't have the specifics on it, but I did hear the request for additional statistics since the year or since the program has been established. We can have that information prepared for the next meeting.
Good. Sir, if I can add to that, we have definitely seen an uptick in the requests for the circles, the two and a half, three in circles. We ordered, was it 500 to 1,000? I can't remember the exact number before Christmas, and we're already looking at another order. So what we'll see is big orders come in for large pieces. If people are trying to cover like underneath decks and stuff like that. And then we'll see big orders for those three, those circular pieces. And then smaller orders for, you know, I need seven and a half inch by 16 inch. I only need, say, 10 of those. But the big orders are for the circular pieces and then the large pieces where they're trying to enclose decks or void spaces in their house.
And just one last thing. So, you know, we say we're advertising. And, I mean, I'm sure I don't read everything, but I've never seen it other than the emails that I get every so often. I've never seen what I would call an advertisement. So I think the little sandwich boards that we put out for, you know, red flag days and things like that, we have the sandwich boards. Just put, put signs on it that says free gutter guards and free vent screens and the MOFD phone number and an MOFD symbol, you know? And just put them on important street corners around. And people, some of the people that are going to call it aren't going to live in the neighborhood, but most of them will. Or put them, don't put them, you know, in like downtown Arinda, put them out so that mostly the people that are driving there would be from that neighborhood. And just see if that helps.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's a cheap way to advertise.
Next up is operations.
Good evening, Directors. I'll be giving tonight's operations update of significant events that we can report on since our last meeting. And I'd like to begin with the details that occurred on December 23rd. In the morning of December 23rd, 2024, MOFD received multiple simultaneous calls for service for vehicle accidents in the morning. During this day, as you can see in the picture before you, the roadways were wet. Highway 24 had calls for service in both east and westbound directions. And we received mutual aid support from our partners from Contra Costa County Fire and AMR for ambulances during this time. We also responded to the head-on collision that you see before you on Moraga Way involving two vehicles with a total of four passengers. And all of the passengers in these vehicles met, met trauma criteria. And, and one of the vehicles required extrication. Next slide, please. While returning from a transport to the hospital and the, on the Alameda County side of, of the Calacot Tunnel, during the same morning, Medic 45 encountered a vehicle fire that you see before you. After donning their PPE, the crew on Medic 45 took quick action to complete an evacuation of the occupants in the vehicle and provide them with an area of refuge and started to initiate with what limited tools that they had, the extinguishment of this vehicle. That picture to your right is a picture of the air filter from, from the ambulance that they took out and made sure to clean. While this was happening, the on-duty battalion chief was dispatched to this call along with a full response from both MOFD and Oakland Fire. Again, MOFD had units responding to this incident. We received, concurrent with this incident, we received calls for service for residential structure fire in Arinda. The alarm was dispatched with information of two elderly occupants that were still inside of the residence. The battalion chief responding made communications with Oakland Fire, triaged the resources to assist and facilitate this current incident that you see before you to allow for a full response to the structure fire in Arinda. Next line. On that same day, the same morning, at approximately 10, 15 hours, our crews responded to the Los Palomas neighborhood in Arinda for a residential structure fire. Crews reported or completed a hasty primary search and made an aggressive fire attack to contain the fire to the area of origin. The fire did go to a second alarm, which includes four engines, a truck, another battalion chief, their ambulance, in addition to our full response. And, and fortunately, we were able to determine that the home was unoccupied at the time. No injuries were reported at the time of incident. The fire remains under investigation. Next slide. And this is a copy of the press release that we generated and put out for, for information. Next slide. Directors, I want to kind of change gears just for a bit. Our personnel are certainly familiar with communicating with our community members in times of need throughout emergency. Our incident priorities remain as life, property, and environment. And at times, others may not understand what is valuable or to those that are affected. They certainly do not always include monetary items. As I mentioned, this, this incident occurred on December 23rd, just before Christmas. So once we were able to determine that there were no lives involved directly, our, our gears shifted to salvage items in this home to include Christmas trees and the president, the presents under the tree. I took this picture because this is, this was very important to the family that we may not understand. And there was a turtle in here. It was a family pet. And it meant a lot to the family, and I'm happy to say that we were able to return this alive turtle to the family. And that kind of leads me into the next slide, please. Our, our crews are currently assigned down south, doing just that. In times of, of critical emergencies, we may not understand things that are important to us or important to others. And sometimes they can, they can mean things that don't have, that may not be tangible or may not have a monetary value. But, but we remain committed to supporting our partners in times of need. And this is certainly a time of need for the residents of Southern California and those that continue to be threatened with, with fire weather throughout, throughout the region. MOFD has no assigned to assist in mitigation and recovery efforts. And I'm confident that I can speak for all of us when I say that our thoughts go out to those affected by these fires. I am calling in this, this evening from the Palisades Incident. And I, this, this, these communities, they have a long road ahead of them. And, and we certainly are thinking of them in times of need. Next slide. Changing gears and inclusion, one of the most significant event that we've had at MOFD, welcoming our new fire chief, interim fire chief Jeff Isaacs. And Chief Isaacs, we are excited to bring you along, look forward to working with you in a different capacity. Pending any questions, concludes my report.
We got to welcome Chief Isaacs.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard as the chief.
Thank you, sir. Great honor to be serving our community and the men and women of the Moraga, Arinda Fire District. Directors, I wanted to take a brief second just to kind of go through my projects and priorities for the upcoming year. As I came onboard, you know, hit the ground running, my plan was to immediately have meetings where I would go over expectations for Chief Lambert, the VCs, and then we would meet with the shift captains just to kind of make sure we have everybody heading in the right direction and hear any concerns from the staff. That obviously, that meeting with the VCs didn't happen because we immediately deployed members down to Southern California. But that will take place once everybody gets back and things settle down a little bit. But the projects that I have focused on and Chief Lambert and I are working on, Station 45 remodel, working with the Ad Hoc Committee, working with the firefighter group that created the plan and gave us that first drawing that was actually pretty good. Our architect was very pleased and it gave them a very good starting point. You know, working on single role implementation, the Zone Zero discussion that's going to take place later tonight. Fire hazards severity zone maps were supposed to be coming out this month. I did anticipating that to get pushed back because most Cal Fire staff is deployed to the fires in Southern California. We're in a fire code update year. So I want to work with the board of directors and then the city council, city manager, town manager, and town council to talk about any lessons learned from the Southern California fires and anything that we need to update in our fire code through local amendments. There's also discussion from the State Fire Marshal's Office that they're going to adopt a WUWE code this year, and that's something new. So we'll have to spend some time to go through that and understand that better and bring it to the board and explain that process. If that gives us the authority to enter into areas that we've never looked at before in the code, there was discussions that we may be enforcing more the Chapter 7A, the indoor resistant construction standards through that WUWE code, but that remains to be seen. Working to complete the fuel break and always looking for new grant opportunities. The standards are the standard to cover fuel reduction burn projects. Also looking at the admin building in the Station 41 rebuild, getting that lined up. The admin building, you know, we're bursting at the seams. There's days where, you know, staff's pumping into each other, staff has to have earphones in so they can have conversations or it's just too noisy. It's too many people in such a confined space. So it's a discussion that needs to be had, maybe not right now immediately, but in ensuing months, we need to really look at that and have a discussion. And then the website update. We have a great website with a lot of information, but it's, it's kind of clumsy. It needs to be better organized, not pointing fingers at any staff. Staff's done a great job to get everything in there, but now it's time to take a tactical pause, look at that website and figure out how we can make it a little better. My priorities, public education, public education, and public education. The one thing we hear from our citizens is when I started as fire marshal, we sent that little postcard and people said, ah, that doesn't have enough for information. I didn't get it. So we changed it to that flyer, a four-page fold out, and we got a lot of positive feedback. Hey, a lot better information, but we still have a lot of our citizens that don't get that information. So one thing I want to look at is how do we get information to our citizens? Is it through letters? Is it through email? Is it through social media? One thing that I have done is brought on a consultant following our purchasing guidelines. We entered into a contract to exceed $4,700. And this individual, that's their priority, that's their job, that's what they do. This is a side consulting business where they can help us, the deliverables are going to look at our website. See, okay, hey, here's some areas that you can fix your website. Because our social media posts, when we send it out, it needs to point back to our website. That needs to be our hub of information. They're going to help us touch the social media platforms. We're getting MOFD Twitter, we're getting all these areas where we can flood the information out to our citizens, put the QR codes, put the information, come see us for gutter guards, have the discussions on the fire hazard severity zones. Why is Zone Zero important? So things like that. So when we come, when I come before you for the next budget cycle, we may be bringing forward some ideas that, hey, we need to spend a little bit of money to upgrade our website. Or maybe this person identifies the upgrades we can do in-house. But right now, we don't have that information. So we're looking at that, focusing on how do we get information? Because I believe that's a key part that we've kind of, and I'll take the hit on that, that I failed that as the fire marshal, really getting that public information piece out. Next priority is training and education for all our personnel, our firefighters, our captains, our engineers. Are they getting the training they need so they can participate in the master mutual aid process? Are they getting the training they need to respond to incidents here? Are they getting the education? Are they taking those college classes? So just reviewing those policies and those procedures and letting them know, staff know that it is a priority of mine and Chief Lambert's to make that available for them. Review of fire prevention inspection process. We've been doing it for five, I've been, was there five years as a fire marshal? We have a good data set. We have some lessons learned. So let's review our process. Let's fix stuff. Let's streamline process. We just went live with our new application process for our permitting software. So we want to build on that. And is there ways to do better with our property transfer inspections? Need to update our modification process. It was really good when we started, but people found a loophole in it and it's another way that they use to prevent from complying with our codes. So we need to streamline that process and require new information for them. And then just updating our IT and our forms. The staff should be able to get on at a fire station, fill out a form and boom, blast that off immediately. So right now, it's a little cumbersome. It's challenging, and those are one of the priorities I have. So again, Directors, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to explain the priorities in the projects that I see going forward through 2025. Happy to answer any questions.
Just one, one quick comment that kind of came out of the meeting we had about Station 45 the other day was that since buildings cost much to build, that the admin part of 41 might want to be rented, you know, at a, at a local office space rather than be actually rebuilt by us. And it might be a lot more economic to do that, based on what the architect thought. Just a thought.
Yes, sir. And I think as we progress, you know, in the next upcoming months, it would be a good topic of discussion is what do, what does the board feel we need to do and what is fiscally appropriate? And, you know, we find, one, find a place, what are we willing, you know, are we buying and we renting? What, what is the board, you know, feeling? What is the best options available to us?
And then we have our upcoming calendar and events. So we have a few fire station visits and some school education visits at Glorieta and Delray Elementary School. So we will now open public comment on the announcement items for 2.1 through 2. So we will now open public comment on the announcement items for two point one through two point four. And we do not have any hands raised. And I've not received any written public comment. You have a comment?
Comments, no.
So that the public comments were for the items that we just discussed. So now we are opening public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And we do not have any hands raised. We did receive.
I mean, I'm just saying that we see one gentleman here. Usually if we have an item on the agenda and they don't want to wait till maybe the end of the meeting, we sometimes allow them to speak. Is that?
Yeah. Are you, are you here to talk about something that's on the agenda?
Know what's the status of zone zero?
Oh, that is on the agenda. So we're getting there. Yeah, well, it's on the agenda a little later. Yeah, it's a discussion item.
Okay, and so to continue for the items not on the agenda, we did receive four written public comments from Nick Waranoff, Ari Reeve, Ashley Coats and Anna Reeve. They were forwarded to the directors and posted on our website. And so we will close public comment. Public comment for the consent agenda items is now open. We do not have any hands raised or any public comment.
I would like pull item four point six if we could, and I think that we, so we can discuss that later. And unless I hear any other people that want to change things, I would also then move that we approve the consent agenda without four point, everything but four point six.
I'll second that.
Director Danziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens.
Hi.
Director Romer.
Hi.
President Hasler.
Hi.
Okay, so for four point six, I think we had some discussions earlier about maybe doing a little bit more research on with other alternatives. There are, you know, business alternatives rather than just joining a, joining a, what do they call these things? A joint group, bits of government oriented group. There might be, you know, Delta offers plans with groups of businesses, for example, and maybe they have the same or at least as good rates, I mean, who knows? But the, you know, we were in one of these other joint hours groups and we have very little input and they, you know, they do have overhead and they seem to have, you know, people that make reasonably good salaries and stuff. So there's a bunch of overhead involved in these things. And they must, you know, so that eats up part of the savings you have in your rates. So I guess I'd be interested in understanding more alternatives that we might have.
Yes, sir. We can absolutely do that, bring this back at a later date next month if we've been able to get the questions answered.
Well, I have a couple of questions on that since we opened this this item. Is is it imperative that we approve this now to provide the dental insurance for our members going forward?
So our dental will start April first, twenty twenty five is when our new year will start with dental. So we do have, by the next meeting, we will need to have, make a decision so that we can make a change for April first, twenty twenty five.
Okay, I mean, I'm hearing what Director Jorgens said, but I I would, I would move to approve this. Make a motion to approve this. I think it's reasonable and I think I've read through it. I think, I don't think we're going to find something better.
Maybe just a question is, if it's okay to discuss what, I mean, what, what are you thinking?
I don't know, I just, if you only go ask one person, how do you know it's the right rate?
Got it. You're talking due diligence.
Oh, yeah, I just, you know, we should at least make a few more phone calls and find out if there's somebody else that might offer the same or better rates. Because our objective is to, you know, we aren't putting on an R F P for it, which, you know, we could arguably have to do. So we, you know, we should at least make a few phone calls and see if it's the best rates available.
And Gloria, is there any risk if by waiting a month, if we, that we would miss the deadline? If we wait till February?
It's going to get, it's going to get close, right? Because we also have to, we have to pick the insurance and then we have to do open enrollment and allow the employees to to add dependents and do what they're going to do. But we probably could still get it done, but I did want to share a little bit more, if it's all right, about what we did. And so we worked with a licensed broker with Alliant Insurance Services. And the district right now, we, we contract directly with Delta Dental. All right, so it's just MOFD, we have our own contract with Delta Dental. So the broker recommended that these plans. So we, we compared our current plan design with Delta Dental to Delta, to other plan designs with Delta Dental through this Prism J P A, which is what the recommendation is tonight. And then Prism had five, let's see, four or five different plans. Let's see. Okay, Prism had three different Delta Dental plan options. And one of them was exactly, exactly the same as what we currently have. And it was five, five point seven percent less than what we're paying as just an individual agency. So, and then the other two options were a more robust plan, which is what Local twelve thirty had requested during the negotiation process. That was one of their items is they wanted a more robust dental plan, better dental benefit. So there were three different options for with Delta Dental. Then the broker also offered us this plan through a different dental insurance called Ameritas. And Ameritas, there were four different options with Ameritas. And they were less expensive. And then finally, the last thing that we did, we also went through the, looked at where we get our workers' comp insurance through fire risk management services. And they also offer benefits to government agencies. And so we looked at their plans as well. They have, let's see. They have six different plans that we looked at and theirs, their rates were more expensive. So we rolled, ruled them out. So then we shared all this information with the Local twelve thirty representatives. And then they came back and said that they wanted this, this Delta Dental plan that's before you tonight. So we did look, we did use, you know, other broker. And we also did look at, you know, three different ways to get insurance, but through government agencies. But we did not go, you know, directly just staying with our own contract.
And and you said our own contract was more expensive than what the broker offered for the same insurance?
Correct. It was right five points.
Because we're small. Yeah, exactly. We don't have the power. So. Go ahead. I was going to say, so, so does that mean that the plan that the local twelve thirty wanted, we were getting a better price by going through the broker than if we went by ourselves?
Correct.
Okay. So what was the plan that was cheaper than Delta Dental's plan?
It was called Ameritas.
And what was wrong with that one?
Twelve thirty wanted to stay with Delta Dental.
Well, what they wanted, what they have a contractual right for is something that's better than what they currently have, right?
So the M O U with Local twelve thirty does not specify what the provider is. It says the district will pay for, the district will provide dental insurance. And it says how much money the district will pay for that dental insurance. So that is it. So then, so there, so that then the district has flexibility with in terms of, you know, do we go to, it doesn't say we'll get it Delta Dental or Ameritas. So we worked with Local twelve thirty to look at the different options for the remote, more robust plan. And then they came back and said they wanted Delta Dental, but it wouldn't cost any, the district's still paying the same amount. You know, that is a fixed capped amount that's in the M O U.
Okay, so they're happy with this and it doesn't save us any money to go any different direction. It's a matter of how much. At the moment, we're only negotiating on their behalf, not on our behalf, if you want to call it that, think about it that way, since we have a fixed cost.
That's one way to look at it. Yes, the district's cost is fixed.
Our, our cost is fixed and if we went with the one that they chose, they pay the delta of the, delta is not the right word, but you know, the difference.
Difference, yeah.
Yeah, difference between.
Okay, well, then, and I didn't care as much.
Yeah.
And I think.
So we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it then.
Director Danziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens. Director Romer.
Hi.
President Hasler.
Hi.
Item five point one, fire prevention and emergency medical services user fee study. Proposed fire prevention and emergency medical services user fees. Proposed fire prevention cost recover free policy.
Good evening, directors. One of the goals this fiscal year is to complete a fee study in order to adopt updated fees effective July one, twenty twenty five. A fee study has been completed. Tonight, we have in attendance Courtney Ramos, Senior Vice President with Nature's Consulting Group, who will provide a brief presentation at this time.
Good evening, directors. Thank you for your time this evening. I just wanted to give a brief presentation, kind of going over why we did the study. What were the results associated with that study and then what are the associated next steps? Next slide. So a little overview of the project. The purpose of doing a cost recovery or a user fee study is really to document the services, service level assumptions and the direct and indirect costs associated with those services. We do this kind of for two reasons. The first and most important is the legal requirements. There are several different rules in in California that state that you can't charge more for a service than it costs to provide that service. So what this study does is it makes sure that we're in legal compliance with those regulations. Also, there are a lot of fiscal best practices associated with understanding what your cost of services. Doesn't mean you have to charge full cost, but it provides a basis. These, these studies provide a basis for setting your fees. And they talk about also setting formal policies so that we end, we don't just make those decisions in a vacuum, but we document why we've made those decisions. And that we conduct these every three to five years, thereabouts, so that we can update those costs. We can take into account specific to fire code changes that might mean that we have more or less inspection or plan review requirements. Technology changes, we've now ushered in this era of electronic plan review and and other types of inspection options. So making sure that our fees, our cost for service are in alignment with how we're providing those services. Excellent. So our objectives for this begin with streamlining the fee structure. So we want to make sure that that structure that we have is reflective of the services that we're providing and how we're providing those services. And so what we did when we worked with staff was to talk about how can we make that fee structure better? So first, one of the things that we did is we made it align better with the fire code so that we made sure that we were capturing all the things that we needed to capture, that the fire code says that we need to be doing. We also looked at identifying kind of minimum plan review or inspections that would be associated with those types of permits. So again, being more transparent with the public about what you're getting for the service that we're providing. And then also just making sure for some areas, combining plan review and inspection. If we know we have to do plan review and inspection, rather than having two separate fees showing what that full cost is going to be as opposed to an applicant needing to see that it's in two different places on the fee schedule. After we streamlined and and kind of look at that fee structure, then we talk about average time assumptions. How long does it take to provide an inspection, including travel time to get there? Time onsite, any kind of documentation, reporting that we need to do associated with that. Same thing with plan reviews. And what we want to do is we want to talk about what is, you know, not the best set of plans we've ever seen, but also not, you know, drawings on a napkin. We also want to make sure that we're not looking at, you know, having to walk somebody through an inspection, but also not, you know, again, that best developer that's out there, everything's done and and we can just check it off five minutes into there. So what is an average reasonable amount of time that we should be spending, plan reviewing or inspecting for these services? Then we look at calculating fully burdened hourly rates associated with the staff. So we want to take, it's not just the salary and benefits of the staff who are providing that service. We have a lot of people who support those staff to provide those services. We also have vehicles and fuel and other operating expenditures that we need to account for in that. So really, what is that fully burdened hourly rate associated with those services? We also conducted comparative survey just to see what everybody else is charging. Everybody likes to know what our neighbor is charging, although we will caveat that and say that if they haven't done a fee study, the fee that they're charging might not be their full cost and or they might have chosen to subsidize those fees for any particular reason. But that information is also in the report. Again, like I said, we want to make sure compliance with Prop two eighteen and twenty six. So this report kind of serves as a ceiling, as it were. What is the maximum amount that you can charge to provide those services? And then ultimately resulting in this updated fee schedule that is going for you for adoption. Slide. So high level, what are we looking at? If we look at fire prevention and E M S services together, the overall cost recovery is thirty six percent. There's about a seventy eight thousand dollar subsidy associated with fire prevention services, those inspections and plan reviews, and about a four million dollar E M S subsidy. If we look at just prevention cost recovery, you're at about seventy two percent. We typically see anywhere between fifty and eighty percent cost recovery on average. And the largest deficit associated with that relates to fire construction permits. If we look at E M S cost recovery, it's about thirty four percent. It's pretty good, right there in the middle, as we typically see anywhere between twenty and fifty percent. And the thing to note about E M S is that recovery is really limited by the payer mix and reimbursement rates. So even though you've charged one amount, you often don't ever recover that amount, given those limitations, which is why we see such low cost recovery associated with E M S services. Next slide.
I'm just asking a quick question. Do you want to have questions at the end or along the way?
Go for it.
Because that was, so if we have unrecovered expenses, you know, we have bad debt basically. Do we get to allocate the bad debt across everything else and and build a higher rate next year? That's an expense.
You can try, but again, you still have that same problem of being limited on the recovery of it. So you could keep increasing your fees, you could even try and set your fee so that those who, the payers who who wouldn't necessarily be limited by those insurance reimbursements. But we're talking, you know, fifteen thousand dollars for an ambulance ride if you got to that. And it's not a guarantee that it would, that you would actually recover it and and, you know, bridge that gap.
Well, I'm not talking about not charging the people in Arinda and Maraga. I'm talking about the bad debt that we have from people we actually do charge. Charging that again to the people who we do charge. Some allocating it somehow.
If it, for, for E M S, the problem is just that I think it compounds it, that again, you're raising fees, but given the payer mix and the people who are paying that, you're, you don't have enough people who would pay the full cost that you could actually, you, it would just be this kind of never ending raising your fees exponentially.
So, so your cap is your insurance reimbursement really is what it is. So even though, so the insurance, whatever is set by Medicare, Medicaid, whatever is set by, so we can't ever get above that, even though our costs are greater.
Correct.
So we will, okay.
There aren't insurance companies that, you know, auto insurance companies or whoever that are having to pay some of these E M S costs that we could get more for?
I haven't seen it. Doesn't mean that it couldn't happen, but.
So all of our bad debt is for people who can't afford to pay it?
Can't afford or who are limited. I mean, like Medicare and Medicaid cap it, I think at like seven hundred dollars. And, you know, most transport fees, you're talking two thousand, three thousand dollars. So that's a difference of about, you know, seventeen hundred, twenty seven hundred dollars difference. And that's just for one patient. So again, to have to layer that on top of everybody else and that you'd need enough people who don't have insurance caps to try and cover that, but then not to mention you've got the people who would look at that or get that five thousand dollar or ten thousand dollar bill and not be able to pay that just compounds that.
Hey, what, what, what mix, sorry, I might, I should maybe know this, but what mix is the E M S compared to the other fees? Is that the largest of the fee groups? So, so for example, if you look at all the fees, right, we have the plan review and we have the citations.
Oh, yeah, it's for the, the.
The E M S would be the greatest by far. Yeah, okay, that's what I figured. So the thirty four percent really is the number that drives everything. Because the rest is, you know, so, okay.
You could easily bridge the gap on prevention pretty, pretty quickly. And it's not, it's not, if you go back one slide. We'll go back, yeah.
Because prevention is seventy two anyways, right, which is the top end of the range.
Yeah, so it's only seventy eight thousand.
Yeah.
Is the subsidy for prevention versus about four million for E M S. Which is why I was saying you could try and keep loading it on.
Oh, I see.
But it's such a large number.
Oh, but it's not four million. That's not the right number because a vast majority of the four million is the residents that we waive the fees for. So those are gone. We don't charge anything extra for those people, but the money that we're not getting from the people who owe us the money, who are, you know, who actually should pay, which is a much smaller number than four million dollars, is what we, I'm not understanding why it's because that's a cost and if we have the right to pass it on, why wouldn't you try to pass it on?
You could try.
Just like we're passing on, you know, your cost and the cost of the chief and the cost of the lawyers and the. and the cost of the lawyers and the cost of everyone else that we have, right?
You could try.
Okay.
I don't know. I, but again, I think that it's a balance because at some point it will become too burdensome and the people who were paying would just not pay and would go into default or something like that. And so again, I think it's that balance of setting that fee where you can get, you know, some, some money is better than no money from recovery.
At the middle, I mean, do you think we are? I know it's the middle, but, you know, comparatively in the Bay Area, are we at where other people are at the 34%? Or for example?
No, absolutely. This is not uncommon.
Okay.
I've seen deficits much larger than this associated with EMS. And, you know, there are different ways that you can try and do, you know, to account for it. You can set different rates, right? For people who are within your, within your district versus those who visit or who are out of town. We see that in certainly like down south Huntington Beach has a pretty strong program for that for out of towners because they get a lot of visitors that come in and out. So the rates that they charge somebody who is not within their jurisdiction is much higher than those who are not. But again, if they're a Medicare visitor or Medicaid visitor, you're going to be capped either way, so.
But why not try?
You absolutely can.
And then how did you figure out, you know, we have like IT costs, for example, that are very high for keeping our records and making sure they're secure? And there's a lot of medical records, especially that cost us a fortune to make sure they're secure. How do you allocate the costs of that?
Well, all costs are allocated per transport.
But how do you figure out the IT costs for a transport?
So we look at, so what we would do is we would take all costs associated with EMS services. And then they're spread over the number of average transports that are done in a year.
So is IT, do you actually, do we allocate part of our IT budget to emergency transport?
So there's a lot of costs that went into it. So it's not just like ambulance. We also look at a little bit of suppression costs because we also have people who are responding to those that aren't necessarily on an ambulance. They might be, the fire truck might get there first. We might have personnel associated with that. So yes, we do look at all the different components associated with that, including like the billing for it. All of that is allocated towards that and is part of the cost equation.
Great. As long as we're asking some questions, I have one right now. If I'm a Medicare person, which I am, I'm over the age, and I live in the district, if I needed a transport, does Medicare pay anything for me?
I believe Medicare would pay for you what they would pay for anybody else.
They would?
Yes.
That's like $700 we were talking about per transport?
Roughly $700 is the current cap.
Even though I'm a resident of the.
We only, we waive the excess fees.
The excess fees. So we just, you still charge Medicare through, through my.
Or whoever.
Through my health plan?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Right.
You would charge anybody. So whether you are on Medicare or not, you would charge. And then the, it's at the discretion of the district as to whether or not you go after the remaining balance. And then there are, there are funding sources that help offset some of those. GEMT is kind of one of them that you can do through the state to help get back some of that money that is not being given by Medicare. But it's also a statewide pool, so.
Do we do that?
We were part of that GEMT program for several years, but it was costing us more than we got because we have so few Medi-Cal transports. So that's why we weren't, it was not a revenue generator. So we got out, exited from the program.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Great.
Any other question? So some things to consider related to cost recovery. The first is kind of looking at cost recovery and understanding that, one, that what this report does, like I said, is kind of gives you that ceiling, what's legally allowable. But then also to recognize that when we subsidize fees, that there's now another funding source for that, which is typically kind of that, the property tax, or if you're able to get grant funding, that that's where those dollars would go if we set something at less than 100% cost recovery. You do have two options with fee setting. You can, you know, rip the Band-Aid off, go right into it for whatever it is that your cost recovery goal is, or you can phase that in. And then also, you know, we want to continue the practice that the district already has of adjusting our fees annually so that whatever it is that we're setting, that we maintain that goal, that we don't just take this set it and forget it approach of we set our fees and then we just leave them alone for, you know, the next five years to take a look at that. So I think then that leads into the final slide, which is kind of what are those next steps? And those next steps are to determine, you know, what is the district's cost recovery philosophy? That philosophy can be general. You know, you can say we want to be at 100% cost recovery. That doesn't mean that every single fee needs to be at 100% cost recovery. Just means that's our goal. If there are areas that we think need to be subsidized, burn permits, occupancy inspections, things like that, then creating, creating that policy and documenting why it is that we're making those decisions. Again, so that we don't, if we're making them for particular reasons right now, we don't want to carry those forward for the next five or 10 years if we only need it for right now. So documenting those allows us to understand why we made those decisions and has the, creates the ability to review those decisions and rescind them if we need to. And then the adoption part of it, again, like I said, we can go immediately. If we want 100% cost recovery, we can implement our fees immediately at 100% cost recovery pending noticing. Or we can adopt a phased, a phased approach. So maybe we want to get to 100%. Like I mentioned earlier, we're at about 73. So maybe we want to do, you know, 10% now and 10% later or something like that. We would recommend not taking more than three years to get to 100% cost recovery just because of the way that things will change within that timeframe. But those are the options.
Sorry, one more question. Probably just not understanding, but how do you get to 100% cost recovery if we know we're never going to get there on EMS?
You wouldn't with EMS.
Okay, so you might, you break it apart piece by piece and look at it. Okay, okay, got it.
You have a, you have a desire to try to reach that.
It's a goal, it's a goal.
You said the bills would be 100% recovery. You just don't collect all the bills.
Okay.
Or have a philosophy wave fees for residents.
So you have the philosophy of here is our cost structure and here's what we're going to bill, but we understand we may have to waive part of it.
We have to waive things.
Okay, got it.
Or not get paid or whatever.
Okay, I was taking it as our goal is to get paid. It was like, it seems futile, okay.
No, absolutely. That actually is, is the end of my presentation. So if there's other questions.
I have, I have some questions for somebody. I'll just put out, I have a few of them.
Yeah.
So how did you choose? So I'm curious about the comparative agencies that you use in your report. And so, and when looking at it, in one, one of the areas there on table 24, you have San Mateo, but you don't, but everything else, you don't have San Mateo anywhere else. And I'm thinking maybe that was supposed to be Contra Costa County? It's on page 29 of your report. I was surprised to see San Mateo there one time only.
I, that's a good question. It might have just, we might have had it in there and then taken it out.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it shouldn't be there, is what I think.
Yeah. Yes, because I don't, I don't see it. I was going to say it might have been potentially one that was looked at but removed. And it just didn't get taken out of that particular.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe it was supposed to be Contra Costa County. And it was just an editing, probably something. But, okay, so. So how did you, how do you choose your comparative agencies? Because I'm just curious.
We start with who does the district typically compare itself to? Who are the neighboring jurisdictions? But sometimes we have to look a little further depending on the services that we're trying to compare. So for example, if we're looking at provision of EMS services, if somebody didn't have those services in house, we might have switched out some of the comparatives in order to do that. But generally speaking, we're looking to see who are the surrounding jurisdictions. And sometimes it can also be looking at the makeup of the jurisdiction. So even though there might be some people that are close by, depending on the mix of residential and commercial that you have, we might choose a different jurisdiction, even though they might not be your immediate neighbor.
Okay. If our fees are determined to be too high, is there a requirement for us to lower the fee?
If the study shows that your current fee is higher than what it's costing you to provide the service, then you would need to reduce the fee.
And so we have some of those. We do, okay. And we haven't done this study in over 10 years. Didn't I hear you say we're supposed to do it every?
Three to five is the best practice.
Yeah, okay. All right. So in, in looking at our fee schedule too, and some of the new fees, like things like tents and welding equipment, things like that. I mean, a lot of these fees, I don't, I haven't looked back at what we've collected, you know? But I think probably a lot of these fees, we don't even, we have them on our fee schedule, but we probably don't even use a lot of them. So, right?
May sir, you're absolutely correct. So when I built this out, I went through the fire code and what can we charge a fee for?
Okay.
What could somebody come and say, per the state fire code, you have to, I need a permit for this? And you're absolutely right, there's stuff that on here that we've never issued permits for. But my fear was if we don't put it on there and somebody comes in, now I have nothing to charge.
Okay.
You know, for our staff.
So did you look at that to compare what we have to the fire code? I mean, I'm here, the chief saying, yes, they've looked at it. But have you looked at that to make sure we're covered? So somebody doesn't come in here tomorrow and ask us to, that they want to do something that we don't have a fee for?
Yes, so that was part of what we did was we looked at what the fire code kind of lays out and mirrored the schedule to reflect that. And also not just what was in there, but how the fire code differentiates kind of subcategories and things like that. So like if we look at sprinklers, you know, how it has it on, on range of heads or number of heads. So kind of again, aligning the fee schedule to mirror how the code looks at those different inspection or plan review types or requirements.
Because that brings up a really interesting cost of kind of question. So if we actually don't ever charge a fee or haven't ever charged fees for looking at the subling tanks or whatever, then how do you allocate a certain amount of the chief's salary to that or the IT budget to that? Because by definition, if you allocated part of it to it, you didn't allocate it to something else.
No, because the way that we do the prevention fees, so it's different than the way the EMS fees, EMS fees are kind of what we would call top down, where you look at the total cost of the program and you spread it over essentially the number of use, the number of uses of that program. The way that the code is written in California is that it, it's determined by the unit of service for user-based services. So we have to look at it, what we do is we create an hourly rate. And then we look at how much time is spent towards that particular activity. And so the rate times the time gives us the cost. So really what it is, is it's not going to cost you any more or less to provide a service if all of a sudden you went from doing 40 in one year to 100 in another year. The cost to provide that individual service stays the same. You just happen to do more of them in one year versus another.
That's, so it's the opportu, but it's.
So it's almost by definition can't be true, even if your IT budget, it will, it will cost you more. You're going to have more data to store, you're going to have, I mean, it's by definition.
Right, but in theory, you would have also increased your fees annually to account for the difference in your budget from one year to the next. So your fees would be increasing comparative to your budget increase.
I mean, the fee is theoretically adjusted every year depending on cost increases.
We have dramatically different number of ambulance runs every year over time, we have at least.
I thought you said EMS was different, though.
EMS is different.
You said it was, well, you did the same thing. It still started with your total costs and divided by the number of runs. So when you have.
That's how EMS is factored, yes. That's not how.
But that's a different number for this year than it was for last year then.
Correct.
So you have to do every, to do it right, you would have to have a study every year then. Otherwise, you wouldn't know what your cost was.
If you wanted a to the penny exact number, yes.
It's not to the penny, but they vary by 10 or 15%.
Well, no, but, but you would be, which is also why we look at an average number. We didn't look at just last year.
Okay.
Because those runs are going to fluctuate. And again, if we're going to use the information and leave our fees and not conduct a study every year, then we want to look at those averages.
But on the other fees, which is the much smaller piece anyways, right? It's like per, it's, it's, it's the burden, right? The fully costed burden per hour. And then we determine how many hours that takes. So per unit, it's this price.
Correct.
So you're just taking a person away from what they could have done and put them here. So it's net, net zero, it's net neutral, if you, if you will, okay.
Unless you end up with like.
Well, if you end up with, yeah.
A COVID year and there are no inspections, right? Then you can't, there's just no, and that's part of it is that you're not taking all of your costs and trying to spread it over the number of inspections that you're doing. But it's more of a per inspection.
Yeah.
So not as a question, but so one of the, two, two things here. One is approving the fee structure, but the other one is sort of our philosophy. How we change it going forward. And I think I would propose that instead of saying, because on the ones, maybe not the EMS ones, but on the other ones, salaries, we almost always know what are, other than being in the middle of a negotiation for our, our salaries, we have a pretty good idea what they've been. And I would argue rather than using the CPI, which we know is, for the last 20 years, every single year has been low by a factor or two. I would say we use last year's raise as a proxy for, you know, we can always suggest it later if we need to, but I would not use the CPI because it's, first off, it's a made up number by the government. They just, it's so random, it has very little to do with what salaries or anything else have to do. So I would propose we have a different number that we use rather than, and just use the prior year's salary increase if we don't know what this year's number is going to be. Or just wait and change our fees once we know what the number really is.
But we do know, right?
Well, most years we do.
Contract, the contract, unless you're in between contracts.
Right, exactly. If you're in the middle of negotiations and it's going late, which they often do.
Yeah.
Then, you know, because we're what, six months late on this one?
Yeah.
As an example. Just use the last year's number.
Some of them you put the CPI or, or in indexing kind of an approach versus in our case, we have in a labor contract that says it's 5%. So the 5% would be the correct adjustment.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And the only other thing philosophically, we, I don't know how much we charge schools for various things that we do, but, you know, it's another set of taxpayer dollars that are going to their budget that then go to our budget. And we spend money billing them and collecting it. And they spend money billing it and collecting it. And we all put it on our, you know, have it get audited and everything else. Why don't we just not charge the schools at least for?
The public schools.
Public schools for fees because it's just a circular firing squad that costs everybody more money.
Yeah, that's, I don't know.
I don't think it's a very big budget on it anyway, but it just seems like a lot of paperwork that we do that we.
Is that the E, is that the E?
Yes, sir. And it was one of the years, you know, traditionally in January, we're bringing forward an ordinance for, you know, mending the fee schedule. And with what this report showed, I wanted to seek direction from the board on certain things because I highlighted what the schools would go to it. And my discussions with all the superintendents, you know, their budget was a concern to gain compliance. I know we don't like to hear that fire safety, hey, that needs to be a priority. But the reality of the situation is they're budget driven, just like any other governmental agency. So the increased cost to the schools, I think, is significant and caused me concern. And I wanted to, you know, bring that to the board for a discussion. Another one that was out there was our property sale or transfer. So we created a great program where somebody can send us photos. And what we found is they're doctoring the photos, their photos of their neighbor, or they're not quite showing the complete picture. 90% of the time, we're out there anyway with the photos. So we're going to change that process where if you call for a property transfer, we're going to come out. We should charge them a fee for us to come out. A one-time fee, the inspector comes out and says, hey, you have two issues. The inspector takes a photo of the tree, say the tree, whatever it is. So we have documentation what it looked like before. And then we say now use our process where you upload the photos to us so it can speed that process up. Or maybe the property has too many violations where pictures aren't going to work. And that's what we found too with a lot of the properties that have multiple violations. The inspector's still going to go back out there, but it's just the one-time fee. You know, you're, the one-time fee is us coming out a first and a second time. Because if we're coming out that. Because if we're coming out that first and second time, they're understanding what the needs are. And it shouldn't be a third, fourth time like we're seeing right now. So that is, you know, recovering the time that we spent. Those were the two fees that really jumped out at me that I wanted to see some clarification on.
Yeah. So chief, so are you going to come back to us? Like for the transfer inspection, you're going to come back with a new fee?
We would come back after we hear the direction. Do we want 100% cost recovery? How do we want to adjust these fees? Do we want to not charge schools and other government agencies? Because we have the Fourth of July fireworks. That's a permit in the fee schedule, per the fee schedule, I'm supposed to charge the, our partners at the town of Maraga, you know, for that permit. And we're, staff's already, you know, staffed there on the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Anyway, so what is the board's, you know, direction on that? Where would you like us to go with the fees? Because to answer your question, sir, we would come back next month with an ordinance with the fee set at the rates that the board wishes.
So currently in the report we have here, it's recommended folk recovery on all.
We're talking supportive about.
Other than schools.
Full supportive, 100% recovery today. In other words, there's no wisdom feathered in over time or whatever. But I I think we can leave out local entities that are locally funded by our local taxpayers. That's the way I guess I'd put it, you know, because.
Yeah, but what the chief was saying, would that include the fireworks? I mean, that's, that's pretty, probably takes a lot of time and you have.
What is the fee on that?
I don't know if I would include that.
Still benefiting our locals, sort of all the local citizens and we're already paying taxes.
Maybe that's, I think that is probably over and above. I mean, we have crews standing by there.
But we're not charging for that.
Huh?
We're not charging the, the crew standing by.
Well, I don't know.
The fee for is the inspection. So we have the inspector. When I was fire marshal, I I worked that day. We do a morning inspection. When the fireworks get there, we're required to do an inspection of the inventory. We inspect their, the company's personal protective equipment and how they set it up. And then before launch, we come back out and do another inspection just to make sure their launch platforms are stable and, you know, everything's placard. So there's two, two inspections that we do there that.
Well, so that is kind of a third party. So that's actually an outside company we're inspecting.
Yeah, we're inspecting, but the town is the one that.
Paying for it.
submits for the permit. So it's the town of Maraga that submits the application and pays the fee.
Well, I I think you should give us that fee and let us decide if it should be there, but I I would be.
That fee is $900. It's $964.
I think we should charge that fee. I mean, that's.
It's not thousands.
Nature, I mean fireworks.
I don't know.
If you're looking for a way to, so that you can differentiate between who should pay something and who shouldn't pay. Because it makes it hard to keep adding classifications, you you could always provide the ability to seek a waiver or a discount, where they could come before the board and ask for that, that discount or that waiver for a particular fee. And if it met the board's criteria, then you could waive that fee.
So how much were the fees for the, you got the, for the schools? How much are the school fees?
We based the schools on a number of buildings. When I talked to the inspection staff, it was really determining what's taken a lot of time. And so that's why we went zero to five buildings, six to 10, 10 plus. Those were the private schools. And then for the public schools, our high schools are 20 plus buildings. So for high, the two high schools at 20 plus buildings were going from 632 to 3,290. Zero to 10 buildings on a public school, 506 to 1,081. 11 to 20, 632 to 1683. So pretty significant jump that I knew if I sent that to the schools, you know, they're going to tune me up pretty good and probably be here to complain in front of the board about. So just seeking direction.
Well, I'm also, I'm also from your report. I mean, we're also half the year and we still have, I forget what it was, nine citations or something, but I mean, that, I don't know how many times you've had to go back. It's over and over again. I mean, it's not.
True.
So it's a lot of, it's a lot of time and and
It is.
and and staff time to go back and do this and and look at it and have to come back again and check it. I mean, I I don't, I don't think I would, I would.
I'm becoming less sympathetic. I'm becoming less sympathetic.
Okay.
Do you, do you still think it's a good idea, though, to put a process for a waiver in?
They can always, I mean, anyone can come here.
I think anybody can ask for the fee, right? There doesn't have to be a formal process, or maybe there does have to be. I don't.
Someone could come here and ask, ask us to waive it, right? They could ask us to waive a fee.
If the school came in and said, these are too high and wanted us to waive a fee, they could come and appeal it, couldn't they?
We have a waiver for the, for that car show or something, I think.
We do waivers for non, 501(c)(3).
It's a board policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a board policy on our website for nonprofits and they have to provide proof and their 501(c)(3) letter in order to have those fees waived. So example, the graduation dance.
Yeah.
For an operation permit would be a great example.
So is a school a nonprofit?
It's usually done by the PTA.
So it's an interesting question whether a school is kind of.
Yeah.
As an entrepreneur.
Yeah, government entity. It's not a 501(c)(3).
They're not a 501(c)(3), correct?
You know, I think if we open this up, it's going to get complicated.
I agree.
I, I think we just take the policy to 100%.
I, I do too.
Is where I think we head for.
Yeah.
Personally feel for for us individually to select who would be free and who would be not free. I just think as a general rule, the, looking at the district, the district could use the money. We shouldn't be subsidizing things that aren't on our mission.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I agree.
So I just, I I felt, or it said 100%, 100%. As a policy, I think we would doubt that we can deal with it or give opportunity for management to make a determination if there's a
A hardship.
Reason.
Yeah.
But I would rather not us as a board start picking and choosing who is and isn't.
I agree.
Agreed.
Sounds like we're all in agreement. Mike, are you okay with that? So we're going to charge the schools at the bottom line?
And and we're going to go for 100% and I think implement.
Soon.
Soon.
Yeah, as soon as you get it down.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
We will bring forward next.
So do you, do we need a motion?
I think it's just guidance right now.
Yeah, it was just.
There's nothing to vote on.
We do need public, do we need public?
Yes, you do.
All right, I just, I just want to just go back to the the transfers again, because I know that's, you know, that's something we've done, I forget, hundreds of times, 300 times or so this year. When you come back to us, are you going to, I'm looking at this report on page 15 of the report, are you going to come back to us with the full total cost of 378 for each of those? Right now it's 173 and it says here total cost 378. Are you going to come back to us with that? Is it going to be 378?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So and I would actually propose that, you know, I'd charge them an amount each trip you make. So if you, if you go out and they've done a really good job the first time and it passes, done. And but if you have to go back, it's a second fee. And if they didn't do it the second time and it's a third one, you just keep charging until they get it right. For me, anyway.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
You know, there are, there are crews around that, you know, that we've all sanctioned that that we know how to do it right. And if they want to pay the money, they can, you know, it'd be much smarter to spend it on the crew to do it right the first time.
I also think in the policy, we want an annual increase equal to the rate of salary.
Salary and plus whatever other expenses, you know, if there's a salaries are the easy part. And for outside services, we can, whatever those outside services have gone up, if they've gone up.
And I have a little more question about the the fees also. We're under environmental review. I I know that's probably part of our ordinance that we added last year, the, you know, we have senior biologist and botanist and all that. So that would be someone that the district would contract with?
Yes, sir. That's Sequoia Ecological that we have a.
And and this so.
Their cost to us.
That's their cost. So you've, you've, so if we, they've agreed to these numbers, so when you come back to us, if we, if we need to refer them to somebody, these is, this is what they're going to charge?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not, we're not going to be the ones collecting it. That's going to be the fee they're going to pay the consultant, not to.
Yes, sir.
Fire district, fire, fire district.
Okay.
Do you have the appropriate direction?
Well, yeah, I, I think it was, it was a good report.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I've been on the board, you know, six years now and longer, but I I don't think I've ever seen a report. Well, obviously, I haven't since we haven't done it in years. I I do, I do wish we would have looked at Southern Marin Fire District. That's very comparable to us as far as budget and size and everything. And I think it would have, would have been interesting to see their numbers too for, you know, if we do another, another comparative study, I think they're a good one to do. I know the, the chief has used those before. The former chief have used, used Southern Marin for other studies to look at.
It might even be helpful if we had an ad hoc committee. If we did again, if we did it again, not now, not now, but I'm saying to sit down and talk about what.
Prior.
Prior to the beginning.
Yeah.
And I guess just one sort of trivial thing is, we call it proposed fire prevention in emergency medical services. Why don't we call it fire code enforcement instead of fire prevention? Because we don't charge for fire prevention. This is code enforcement we're talking about, not fire prevention.
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, because it.
Do we need a motion to approve the?
It was just guidance this time, I think.
I think next, next month you come back with, with the actual fee schedule, right?
Yeah, I guess. So there's also this, the district policy, 24 that.
I I guess, Marshall, you need, Marshall.
Hello. Gloria, and you need guidance on that.
Right. So we have what we need for the fee schedule and that'll come back next month for the first reading and with the fees at 100%. And so, but then there's also one part of the matrix report is they recommend that we adopt a cost recovery policy. So there's a draft policy in the, with, let's see, in page, starting with page 129 in the packet.
Yeah.
So we need board direction, please, on any changes that you would like seen made to this draft cost recovery policy, please.
I marked mine up and emailed it to the chief. I had extensive changes on it and I marked it up and sent it to the chief.
Okay. So, all right. So is the rest of the board all right? I mean, do you want to hear what the changes are or how do you want to handle this?
I would suggest if we have changes, we mark it and send it to the chief.
We can let him.
Versus.
Because there were, there were things in there that said, you know, at the moment, we don't charge, you know, we, it's all taxpayer fee based and things like that. It was, it was not customized for us yet.
Maybe the question is, is if we, if we do have changes to this and send them in, we still have a first reading of this next time?
So we can do it that way. I mean, I was planning to get the changes you wanted to the policy tonight, and then the next month you could approve the policy. But if you need more, there's not a big, big urgent time constraint to this. So if it takes two more meetings, that's fine, too.
Okay. There were a lot of things that needed to change in it, in my opinion.
Yeah.
You can take them or not take them. And I talked about Sullivan tonight. One of them was the CPI versus last year's salaries. But there were also just a lot of wording changes and a lot of redundancy in it.
Can, can we, next month, can we approve the fee schedule without the policy?
I think so.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Well, and just for clarification, the fee schedule needs to have two readings. And so next month will be the first reading on the fee schedule. And then it will come back for the second reading and adoption. So we we need to present something to the public to review, comment and bring to the first reading.
Does the policy need to have two readings or the policy is just approved?
The policy does not need to have two readings.
Okay. Policy does not need two readings, so I think it'll work out well. What you can do, obviously, is based on all this input, staff will do their best to sort of harmonize whatever the input is and have another version for guidance next, next.
I think that's.
Great.
Cool.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. And so now we will open up public comment. And we do not have any hands raised and we've not received any written public comment. Item 9.2, discuss options for the community wildfire risk reduction zone zero measures. So we will hear staff report and board discussion, and then we will open public comment.
Good evening, directors. The past several months, we've had tri-agency meeting and had this come before the board in our own meetings. Staff is seeking, seeking direction on where the board wants to go with this and what the board would like to do. There is no, I'd like to be clear, there is no ordinance before the board tonight. What I did do in the staff report was I put several options. And these aren't the only options, but this was just a starting point from with, which the board can, you know, give staff direction, just some ideas to get the conversation going. I know it's a topic, it was a topic tonight down at Maraga when I was participating in their meeting for the 1600 School Street Project Zone Zero is coming up. We've received a lot of calls and emails, particularly because of Los Angeles and Southern California fires. So staff's just looking for the, the direction from the board.
So do.
I'll, I'll just make one comment is that I think, I mean, this is, this is pretty complicated. There's a lot of things to talk about. I think we really need, you know, seeing, seeing really one person here from the public in, in person. I think we really need to do a lot more public contact, you know, to get, to, to tell people we're going to be discussing this as well as maybe just having some workshops in the future. But I, I, in, in reading this and thinking about it, I think we should, maybe it might be a good idea to think about this for new construction. Might be a, maybe easy one to tackle for right now. To me, it's, it's kind of a no brainer. I'm part of it for new construction. And and it's not even a no brainer to me for for property transfers right, you know, right now, but you know, maybe.
Did you say it's not a no brainer or it is a no brainer?
I think, I think there's things to talk about, more to talk about with transfers.
Great.
But I think new construction is, I think it's pretty straightforward. If we're, if we're leaning towards this zone zero, I think new construction, I mean, you're talking about a, a big development in, in Maraga right now. I don't know what else is on the, on the block right now for new construction, but you know, there's new construction, people tearing down houses all over the place and building brand new houses in, in this, in the in, in those lots. So you know, maybe it's easy to talk about new construction first. That's, that's how I'm thinking. So people feel about that, but.
I, I think there's education that still has to happen.
Yeah.
And 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 I think that goes to your point, probably on property transfers, is people may not even be prepared for property transfers at this point in time because we haven't done the education yet. Or new construction, you're starting with a cleared lot. It would be the easiest place to start.
Even if we did it for new construction, I mean, that's like telling the community that we're heading that way.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what we're doing right now. So I I'm just thinking that new construction would be kind of the easier to talk about, but I think overall, we'd have to, you know, make some board you know, decision or some consensus at least that we're heading this way. And I don't know what I'm doing that yet.
When does the map come out? Is it next month?
It was supposed to be the, this month, sir, the fire hazard disparity zone maps. I reached out to my Cal Fire contact, that's part of that program. And he said, right now, everybody's assigned to the Southern California fires. We're not talking map. So I don't know if that's going to push it back a couple of weeks, a couple of months. I mean, we've been waiting years for, you know, at this point for those.
Because another way of dealing with it is where the risk is the highest.
Yep. So I, I guess I would agree with Director Danziger that we. Yep, so I, I guess I would agree with Director Danziger that we need to have lots more education. I think especially education about what happened in LA. And I realize there's, there's going to be some big things, I'm sure eventually that's going to take years to figure out what happened. But I think we've got a couple of firefighters down there, for example, a whole bunch of firefighters, including some senior ones. And you can just look at pictures and, and from what I've seen, every single picture I've seen has green trees in it. And so it was not some huge flame front that came through and burned all the houses down. There were a few of them that didn't burn down. There, most of the vegetation, a lot of the vegetation didn't burn down. So, and a lot of it, I think we, we've seen that we're, you know, starting in the top of the house and working their way down, which means that it came through the vents most likely. So as another way to think about this just today. So, and I think the insurance industry is going to be completely topsy-turvy for a couple of years. You know, we, we'd kind of been hoping that, well, if we did this, then, you know, we'd be able to get insurance and stuff. I think the insurance industry hasn't got a clue for the next couple of years. The federal government might get involved, the state might get involved. Who knows what's going to happen with the insurance industry? So I think our number one goal needs to be not to have our houses burned down, not to be able to get insurance. I think those are two related, but somewhat different goals generally. And so, oh, just a brainstorm I had this afternoon actually, is a way to think about it. There's been a lot of pushback. People are like, well, you know, I love my azaleas, I love the amazing landscaping I have right next to my house. It's going to completely change the value of my house, you know, it goes on and on and on. Some are that way and some of them are, cut it all down now, I'm, I'm all for it. So, you know, several different camps about what to do. A way to think about it is to say, rather than forcing people to absolutely do the five foot zone, whoever you want to have do it. At the moment, we don't have the ability to modify, to force people to modify grandfathered homes. So if you live in your house and your house doesn't meet the home hardening codes, for example, that are the new construction codes, you're done. And you never, you might have to clear your five feet, but we can't force you to put gutter guards on or screen vents and, you know, any, any of that stuff. So a way to think about it is to say, look, if you have a hardened home and we can decide what that definition is, it might be as simple as gutter guards, no wood roofs and, and the screens, you know, as, maybe that's not quite enough, but something like that. If you have a hardened home, you don't have to meet the five foot rule, you only have to meet our current rule for now. Now, we might change our mind later on, you know, if the state decides they like five foot rules or whatever, and we might decide to implement all of it for new construction. But at least it would give people a choice to say, hey, you know, I really love my azaleas, but I'm willing to put the gutter guards on and the screen vents and it will make their homes safer. It will make all their neighbors a little bit safer, maybe not enough for the insurance industry, but it'll make it safer, some safer at least. And it's a way to get, as if we do the five foot rule first, we never have a way to go, you know, encourage them, I'll call it, to do the, the home hardening. The insurance companies might, but we wouldn't have the ability to do that. So I think if you give them a choice early on, at least it will delay their pain in case they, in case we ever do decide to do the, the home, the five foot. And you never know, the five foot rule, maybe the insurance industry is going to figure out that if you have a cement block house, that the five foot rule doesn't apply. So, because my personal view is that at the moment, the five foot rule is, I, I think the amount of data that used to get to that point might have been, they might not have included enough variables, in my opinion. If, like I say, if you have a stone house or a brick house or whatever, and, and a metal roof and no vents in your house and sprinklers under your eaves, it's not completely obvious that they thought about all those variables when they came up with the five foot rule. And so I'm wondering if there are some mitigating factors that we could encourage people to do some of those mitigating things early with the, the potential that we do the five foot rule, but not the absolute forcing them to do them. Just a thought.
Kind of give, give everyone the information and encourage.
Right. But not, but not require the five foot part now, but at least we'd end up with a lot more hardened homes, which has to help.
And it's not as disruptive.
And, and, you know, and it won't cost that much. We'll still give them all the gutter guards, we'll give them all the, the vents. We aren't going to put new roofs on their house to replace the wooden roof. But, but it's a way to encourage people to do good things for their house that eventually, because if, if all you do is the five foot, that's not enough either, right? You know, the, the science.
Look, eucalyptus trees and others.
Well, but just if, if you have, you know, if the embers come down and even if they don't find a receptive fuel bed, that doesn't mean they aren't going to go in your attic if you don't have vents, the vent screens. So your house is still going to burn down and that's not our objective. Our objective is to make the house not burn down. So I, I think it actually gets us closer to the objective in a better way than doing the five foot first.
Directors, if I may suggest that next month, bring back kind of a draft ordinance. I, I think the discussion on why the five foot zone is necessary, that science, we've, we've beaten that up. That, that's pretty clear, that science isn't going to change. But I, what I'm hearing, if I'm hearing correctly, is the education piece, why it's necessary, what it means to a particular homeowner. So if we came back with a draft ordinance that here's what for new construction, five foot non-combustible zone property transfers, or if you harden your home and those specifics can be hammered out during that review of the draft ordinance. Is it a class A roof? Is it class A siding? Is it vents? What does that encompass if you harden your home? You know, we will, right now, you know, potential subject should change at a later date, but you would be exempted from that five foot zone. But we need to be very clear that the insurance companies aren't going, what we do, they're not going to recognize that because they've made it clear that five foot is what they want to see. But everything's subject to change right now with Southern California and what comes out of that.
But as, but I think one of the challenges is we as a fire district don't have the ability. If, you know, we have the ability to tell you, you have to have the zone, the five foot zone zero. But if the insurance industry says you have to have a whole community that has hardened homes and a five foot zone, we can't deliver that. Ever, right? So that's 100% up to the individual homeowners, if they want to harden their home or not.
And we, we can't even deliver the, the inspections to, to assure that this is being done. I mean, personally, where I live, I live up a pretty steep driveway from the bottom of, from the public roadway. You can't even see the front of my house. And when I look at at least Google satellite images, I see a truck that I sold about 25 years ago on my driveway. So I don't know how there would be, I, I don't know about the whole another piece is the enforcement issue. I mean, even the houses you can see, you can only see what you can see usually the front of a house. I mean, no one would ever see my, I have no neighbors, you know, on two sides of me, you would never see the, the back of my house.
Right.
So I don't, I, I have a hard time with some of this, the enforcement piece of it too.
And the insurance part of it. But at, at least I think if we do the, the, give them a choice thing.
Yeah.
At least that will give us some kind of a carrot slash stick to help with the home hardening, which I think will, my gut is, given what we've seen in LA, that would go along, that along with our current code would go a long way toward keeping the, lessening the number of fires, how's that?
Sorry, but is the thought that we take a stance that we encourage home hardening and we adopt something related to new construction and down the road, there might be something else on Zone Zero or?
Well, I think you could, I mean, the new construction is pretty easy for me. I think you just do that because they already have to have a hardened home stuff anyway. So now the hardened home is part of the fire code already, so that's done. The only thing that isn't part of the fire code is an ordinance for Zone Zero. So new construction to me is we should just do that as soon as we can get it done. But for the, for the grandfathered people, I think it would actually be better, even if you said, hey, let's just do it. I would give them a choice of doing it, the home hardening or the five foot, you know, they could do both if they want to, obviously, but only a requirement to do one or the other. And only if they do the hardening, will we give them a pass for a while on the, on the five foot rule.
Question for the fire marshal. If I have, have hardened my home, just to say I have gutter guards, ember resistant venting, no wooden fences attached to my house, but my house is a wood sided house. Is, with that, what, what is that? I mean, wood sided seems to me, would it comply?
Yes, per, per the fire code, if that wood siding does not meet the building code, chapter 7A, which it probably would not, then no, it would not per letter of the law. But what do we want to look at? Do we want to look at the siding? Do we want to look at roofs? Do we want to look at windows? I mean, there's a.
It's a lot of, lot of pieces.
Yeah. What are the ones that are really going to have the big effect on the home hardening events? You know, keeping the embers out of our attic, the class A roofs. You know, the windows and most homes will meet that because they're double paying, the energy standards are, are there. Do we want to look at, there are some older homes that, hey, you, they have that old wood shake type siding. Maybe we say that is not, even if you have the vents, you have the gutter guards, you have a wood shake siding. You know, that's not acceptable for variance of the five foot non-combustible zone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You sound like somebody might have one of those. There aren't, from my driving around, there, there are a lot of people like me who have, you know, wood siding that's a painted house and, you know, my impression is the embers don't start wood sided houses on fire by themselves because it just, there isn't enough contact. They aren't big enough, it's just not the kind of thing that starts that fast. But embers getting into your attic and starting the paper on top of your insulation really happens a lot. And, and so I think it's sort of the 80/20 rule. Sure, there, it can happen, you know, there, there are things that will burn, but we have to kind of think about the things that are going to do the most good for the least pain, I guess, is the way to think about it. And that's kind of what we did with our fire code, the, the two foot out, one foot up thing. Is it perfect? No. Will it help? Sure, I mean, it's got to help a little bit because the embers are going to go in there and there aren't going to be a bunch of dead leaves and things that are going to start and, and then give enough of a nearby flame to actually start your siding on fire. So as long as you've done some of those things, again, it's not perfect, but it seems like a pretty good first step. And at least it doesn't, my impression would be a lot fewer people would be up in arms if they had that choice. Because otherwise we're not giving them any choices. And it actually is better to do it that way because if all they do is the five foot and they never harden their home, because we can't force them to, in, the five foot by itself wasn't interesting. And, and we don't get insurance credit down, maybe down the road either. So, yeah, this is a way to at least encourage the home hardening. But again, I think a lot of, and to tie in with all that, I think in the next few weeks, maybe even before our next board meeting, we should really try to, after the fires are out in LA, let's hope that happens soon. We ought to learn what we learned there. We ought to bring some pictures and some examples of what did happen, if we can. Small example, not, not arsonist and things, just, you know, what happened, what, what kinds of things burned houses down there? And, and say, you know, it was not a flame front in almost any case, you know, in a lot of cases, it was, you know, ember cast that caused a lot of the issues. And make sure that we, you know, communicate what the facts were to the audiences and so that we kind of sell why we're, why we think this is important to do.
Our education, a lot of education.
But it's got to happen pretty soon because people are going to, believe it or not, people will forget about what I have, other than a lot. I've, literally in the last two days, I've had two of my closest friends had their insurance get canceled in the last, not canceled, got non-renewed in the last two days. So the insurance companies are all looking down saying, oh, well, you used to have insurance with this, but now we're canceling. Non-renewing, to be clear, I'm sorry.
Maybe we can hear from the public if there's any.
Yep, yeah, I think. I'm sorry, we've kept you waiting for a long time.
So public comment is now open on the Zone Zero. Would you like to come and address the board, please? And did you fill out the yellow little paper? Thank you so much. You can place it right there in that basket. And then if you can just state your first and last name for the record, it'd be great.
Yeah, my name is Chase Sun, I live in Aranda. And I just have a couple of questions about the Zone Zero. If we looked at, you know, what is the highest risk? What's, what changes are going to provide us the best cost benefit? Okay, as far as I can see, one of the thing that provide good benefit is to, you know, change the, the vent screens. That's pretty cheap. And it does prevent the embers from coming into the house. Once it comes into the house, well, you got a lot of combustible inside. So I think that's a no brainer. And, and I think that's being recommended already by, by the fire district. And so, but then as far as the, the current Zone Zero, I don't know whether everything's been thought through. Because I can see that if you have succulent plants around the house, they may actually retard fire. Because that contains a lot of water, it's going to cool down the, the air. It's, it's going to be the temperature that heat up your sightings and burn them. Okay, it's going to take a few, you know, some time. I don't know how long it's going to take, it depends on the local ambient temperature. So we need to look at all of that. Do we have any studies showing how, how hot does it get, okay, during a fire? Say, well, the thing I'm concerned about is, you know, I got a, I got some trees, big trees near my house. If some of those trees go up, they're going to be very hot. And I have stucco, but then that stucco may still burn if it's hot enough. And so, so these are the things that I'm concerned about. So I'm wondering whether the fire district has some data as to how hot the wood sightings can get before they all combust? How long would it take? And how far do the trees have to be from my house? Because even if they're five, 10 feet away, but if they burn, those big trees can give a lot of heat. So what's a safe distance? Does the fire district have some guidelines in this area? And so, and I also see a, a lot of questions being raised in the public comments. Will those questions be answered by the district at some point? Have all of the questions been reviewed by the district? You know, I don't know whether the, the, the new chief has reviewed everything already or not. And so those things, you know, you know, you know, I, I don't know. I think residents have a lot of concerns and most of them, I think they're valid. And, and of, of course, everybody wants to keep our houses safe. But, you know, how much do we have to do and to actually protect ourselves, our, our houses? And are there something that we are actually doing that's not really going to, that's not really going to help too much? It's going to help, everything's going to help a little bit, I think.
And thank you, that, that concludes, that's our three minutes. Okay, thank you.
Chief, do you want to respond to that or?
Yes, sir, thank you for your comments. I did not plan to address everybody's comments that sent, you know, written comment in. That would, you know, take an immensely large portion of, of my time. I think the majority of the comments that came in had been answered through Chief Wintaker's presentations. You know, gentleman said one thing that, hey, putting succulents there, they absorb heat, the law of heat transfer. Yes, you're right, it will absorb some heat, but the law of heat transfer, heat flows from a hot object to a cold object until they equalize or you reach the combustion temperature of whatever that object is. So what is that succulent? What is its ignition temperature? We have pictures of Southern California melting aluminum structure from structures, that's 1,200 degrees. So, you know, putting more vegetation that can burn, putting more material next to our house that at a certain temperature can't, that will eventually burn, I think is a very bad idea. I don't think that is an answer. If having more vegetation in a forest fire that was going to absorb the heat so nothing else would burn, then we wouldn't have fires. I mean, it, it's that simple. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but the industry standard IBHS, those. those are accepted testing. That is what the industry is looking at is that five foot. I have questions on the five foot zone. Did they look at three feet? Did they look at four feet? What are those temperatures? I've looked through the studies. I can't see that. I'm going to try to reach out, um, to some of those folks. Cause I know a couple retired Cal Fire, uh, individuals that are back there working on that and see if we can get answers to that. But what is recognized from the insurancey, insurance industry and the fire service professionals is a five foot non-combustible zone helps. Now, just to Director Jorgens, your points are just a five foot non-combustible zone doesn't solve the issue. There were numerous homes through the video I've seen of Southern California paradise. Every major incident that we have where embers getting in and those are typically seeing when you see fire at the top of the house, that's not a zone zero issue. That's a hardening of your home. That's embers finding a way, um, finding a pathway, finding a nook, finding a gap in there to start that house on fire. So we know there's three major ways that our structures are burning. You know, the vegetation to structure, structure to structure, zone zero vegetation right next to the structure. Or the ember cast, you know, Chief Lambert had a great picture of that shot. You could see the trees bending over due to the wind, the palm trees that were burning because they had dead palm fronds up there. And the embers that were being produced from that fire, that's what we're trying to prevent. But it has to be, it's a zone zero. It's a home hardening. We didn't get into the problem overnight. We're not going to get out of it overnight. It's a journey we're going to have to take. And I like the board's suggestion that we take it in small steps, just like we did with the two foot non-combustible zone. Hey, we're going to new construction, five foot non-combustible zone. If you're an existing home and you have to meet whatever standards for the home hardening, the, the board feels is appropriate. You can get a variance right now until the state or the federal government come out and, you know, demand something different. Or you can go to a straight zone zero.
To, to further answer your question, thank you, chief. There, there is a lot of research that has been done, a lot of science that shows kind of what those, the eighty twenty rule for each one of the things you can do. And the home hardening things that they've suggested that sort of the number one is the vents, the number two is the gutter guards. Um, you know, I think hardy board type siding, you know, non-gossable siding is stucco, I think actually counts other than the fact that there's a little gap at the very bottom of the stucco, there's an air gap. So you gotta, and if you plug it up, then your, then your stucco rots. So you have to be careful how you do that. But if you put screen under there, at least it wouldn't let the, uh, wouldn't let the, the embers up underneath it. So I think there are, there's a lot of good science that, that we've been trying to communicate, but not everybody's been hearing it. And it's really hard to communicate these things. But there is a lot of science that shows and, and sort of people have gone back and done the forensic research on, you know, watching the, the videos of houses burning and things to know what things worked and what things didn't. And you see the wooden fence that comes up to the house and you can just kind of watch it. You know, people's ring cameras show the fence burning up and then it starts the house on fire and there's nobody there to put. You could put it out with garden hose, but nobody's there with a garden hose and the firefighters are out fighting something else. So there are a lot of things that sound really simple that, that you're going, well, how come that be a big deal? And the answer is it isn't a big deal. It's a small thing to, to fix, but it causes a big problem if you don't fix it. And, and I think our objective is to try to, like you said, focus on the most impactful things that hopefully cost the least. None of these things are crazy expensive. They all add up. But, you know, changing, somebody wrote a letter the other day about, well, it's going to cost me a fortune to take the last five feet of my fence. And I think Chief Wintaker had pointed out that, you know, for a couple hundred bucks, you could buy five feet of six foot high fencing at Home Depot. Now, you might not like the Home Depot fence and you might want to go to, you know, your local iron workplace and spend $2,000 a foot. You can do that, but you don't have to do that, I guess is my point. Somebody else said they left their gate open, which is another way to do the same thing. But, um, but I, I, we, we do know a lot about what causes fires. And I think our objective needs to be to encourage slash regulate what people do to keep not only their house safe, but the community safe. But we have to educate. It's going to make it a lot easier for us and we're all going to be able to keep our jobs if we inform the people first before we just tell them what we have to do.
Yes.
And so we do not have any more hands raised?
You want to ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
I, I do need you to come to the podium.
Yeah, uh, I understand that most of the fires are started by embers. Okay. Because during a windstorm, embers can blow, can be blown a great distance and they can start fires. And there's no way for the, you know, for the fire, firemen to put out all of them that quickly. Because you can start, you know, a 60 mile per hour wind. You, you may have, uh, embers blowing a mile away and there's no way that you're going to catch up. Okay. So, but then also during the windstorm, you're going to have a lot of debris that's going to be blown against your house. Okay. So, so at the bottom of the house, you're going to have debris regardless of whether you have zone zero. That's how I look at it. And then you're going to have embers so that you will have some, you know, some ignition close to the bottom of your house. So, uh, are we going to do anything to protect the bottom, maybe five, 10 foot of the house? If, if the house has wood siding, I see that, uh, yeah, that is a big risk. Because once you have a fire, even smaller fire down at the bottom of your house, that, that wood siding can go. Once that wooden, wood siding goes, the whole house goes. So that's, you know, so that, that's more of the thing I think we need to look at. And so, but anyway, okay, thank you.
And so I think the, the, if you're looking at the insurance industry definition of a hardened home, and I think maybe it's also the fire definition, it does have non-combustible siding. So like cement siding, hardy board siding, which looks kind of like wood siding, but it's not, uh, it's cement siding. But, you know, that, that is part of the definition of a fully hardened home. And I think the question for us is how far from the, you know, how far down that path do we want to force people to go? Because don't forget, we don't have the, the right, nobody has the right to force somebody to fix their existing house.
Okay. Let me ask a follow-up question. The, uh, IBHS test, one of the concern I have with that test is that I don't think they're comparing apples with apples. Because on the one side, it's hardened house with, with metal roof that doesn't burn. Okay. On the other side, you got regular roof, regular siding, that's going to burn. And so it, the question I have is that if you have a non-zone zero for the right side house, would that right, right side house still burn?
I, I think there are, as, as I said earlier, I think there personally, there, we can stop, stop after this. There are a lot of those variables that I'm not sure they, they included all the permutations, the combinations of things to see what was necessary.
Yeah. When we, when we do studies, we need to control all of the variables. We, we can't just say, okay, one, you know, you got three or four different things that's going on at the same time. So.
I, I, I agree with you. I think that's, yeah. It's a problem.
And so we do not have any hands raised? And I do want to quickly acknowledge the written correspondence that came in from Janet Dobbs and Jim Ross, a resident, um, as well as the 98 responses that came in through the community engagement form that were, that was included in our packet. So we do not have any more public comment?
So do we need to provide direction at this point?
I think I have enough direction directors that we will work on a draft ordinance to come back for discussion and some fine tuning as to what we want home hardening to look like, roofs, vents, gutter guard, wood shake shingles. No, to get that, to allow for variance currently to a five foot non-combustible zone. But we will enforce five foot non-combustible zone or draft in the ordinance to enforce it for new construction, potentially even property transfers. And then, you know, also with a plan to educate, 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 have meetings. I know Maraga is talking about a meeting, um, here in February to discuss the fires in LA, any lessons learned that are, you know, coming out already. It might be too soon, but, you know, we've received a lot of calls. People are curious and people are worried.
I think, I think that's a big deal. We should, we need to have a, we should probably coordinate with Maraga so we can all, you know.
Well, we may want to look at, um, you know, whatever you want to call a community workshop or something sponsored by us to maybe, you know, down the line a little bit, so we get a, a draft ordinance and to have something really concrete to talk about.
Yeah. And I think it would help me at least to understand of the things that can be done to harden your home. If there's any way to prioritize those or to say, you know,
What's the greatest?
You know, you can build it out of steel and, and not have, and have it be sealed all the way around with welded things and that obviously won't burn. But short of that, you know, what are the things, as the gentleman here was saying, you know, is there a priority of, of the most likely things that are the most impactful things you can do in order? Cause I'm not sure we want to go all the way to completely hardened. I'm not sure people will buy that for one thing. And so I think if we're going to try to incent people to do that and, and subsidize them to some extent with our free things, we need to understand where that line needs to practically be. Somehow, some guidance on that at least from you, if we could.
Yes, sir.
And, and chief, I have one question. I know on your priority list for the coming year, you talked about fire code. When is that? What, what's the, I'm just curious how that ties into what we're talking about now.
Yes, sir. This week, the state fire marshal was, um, holding through the, um, building standards commission, the hearings on adopting the state code. So they normally kick it out to us late summertime for the state code will go into effect January first, 2026. So we have, we have some time to get it, to look at it. Like I said, the big thing for me is what is the adoption of a wildland urban interface code look like? There's an international code that's been out there for several years, but California hasn't adopted that. Are they blanket adopting that whole thing? Are they making amendments? And, you know, how does that affect our existing code? So it's going to take us some time to work our way through that.
And this is the fire code. So this is the building code, if you want to, this is the part that affects buildings, not landscape.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The question. Right. We're talking about home hardening. So I don't know what the
Well, except that this is
Relation.
But it's all, it's all for new construction.
All for new construction.
Otherwise it
Or, or, or major remodels.
Right. But that's still considered new construction, but, but everybody else has grandfathered. So it's
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, and then just, just hypothetical, in, in the fire code or new construction or additions or construction over a certain, we could, um, we could make it mandatory for ember resistant vents or gutter guards?
It depends what the state does with the wooey codes. Sir, right now the home hardening lives in the, um, ordinance, building in the residential code, which are, um, adopted and amended by the city and the town through their, uh, adoption process. But the building official controls those books. We enforce it because it's adopted, but we cannot amend it. If it's changed where the, and I've heard some discussion on this where they're potentially pulling that out of those code books and putting them in a wooey code book. That's a whole different ballgame because that's ours to enforce and amend.
That could be good.
Okay.
Okay. Great. All right.
So item 5.3, direct the fire chief to issue a request for proposal for investment advisory services for internal revenue code, section 115 trust plans.
Mr. Holtzman had to leave, but my understanding is that Jim Ross is on and is going to present this item.
Correct.
Good evening, members. Good evening, members of the board. Uh, this item was brought on, uh, pursuant to previous discussions by the board without trying to look at ways to increase or maximize the return on investment for these section 115 trust plans. The idea was to issue an RFP to see what sort of interest there was and ideas about how to achieve those goals. Since then, there, there has been some discussion about this item. And, um, there may be some alternative suggestions from one or more of the board members about how to approach this item.
So, uh, you know, at the moment, sitting on an RFP, um, I think there've been some phone calls that were made to potential investment advisors. We currently have US Bank as the trustee for our two, the open fund and the pension fund. And somewhere down the road is, so what's the name of the company, the initials, um, it's not old, yes, but what are, what are their names? I'm sorry. The guys that
Yeah.
They've been presented to us for years now. Um, not the par's people, the ones below that. And I think we, they were reluctant to take, to implement what we had given them as guidance as far as what to, uh, what to invest in. And, you know, I think if they got acquired by somebody too, and so they were, they had very specific funds they were willing to invest in and they were charging relatively good fees and not making great returns. So we were looking for alternatives and the question is, um, how can we find those alternatives? So I think one of the phone calls that, um, Jim was going to make was to US Bank to see what other, uh, advisors US Bank has for other trusts that they have. And to see, and maybe instead of having an RFP, because RFPs can be pretty burdensome. You can, you know, you take a long time to fill out the forms and, you know, we have a relatively small set of funds. We have a total of $20 million to, to be, uh, investing in. And a lot of firms, that's kind of below, below the size things they'd be interested in working on. Uh, but there are firms out there that charge less than half of what we're currently paying in fees to be an advisor. And they, you know, one of them was, I think Morgan Stanley's, uh, you know, OPEB Trust Group. And so there are people out there that appear to be willing to do this for smaller fees. And we thought maybe that the, I talked to the lawyer some and they thought that maybe we could just have a, a more informal process, um, that was bringing in ones that were, we found were willing to do it for much lower fees than we're currently having. And just have a discussion with a number of those, any, any number that whoever wants to call, we'd be happy to talk to. But, um, and then just choose one and bring it back to the board and say, here's, here's one that we found. You know, we looked at all these and we, we found one that was, uh, that was just like we did with the prison thing, you know? We didn't, didn't put on an RFP for that. We just went out and did some research and came up with a better answer. So I think that's easier than doing a formal RFP.
And, and to follow up on those comments, again, Jim Ross with Rainy Public Law Group. Uh, pursuant to the district's procurement roles, this is the type of specialized service that an RFP is not necessary. It's perfectly acceptable to go out and, and talk to, uh, firms and that specialize in this area that, that people know, um, and have good experience with. So, uh, RFP is not necessary in this situation.
Not necessary, but since we already have it right here, I mean, it's no, I don't think it's, I don't think it would be a burden on staff to, to put this out, right? And see if we get any responses. I, I don't know what
The, the problem is
I don't know why not.
Well, yeah, the, the problem is i- if you look at what it takes to solve this, it's a 40-page answer that's going to take somebody two or three days to do. And, uh, we're not really going to get it, you know? The only thing I think we need to know is you've actually done this for other people. You're currently doing it for other people and you know how to do it. And you have reasonable results and that's kind of, you know, are you qualified or not? And then what are your fees? And I mean, it could be like three words. So if we want to put a, you know, a, a half page RFP, that's fine with me. But this is literally, you know, uh, we, we could have been buying a $2 billion project with this kind of an RFP. And so, I mean, it, it literally wants to know the staff that you're going to assign to each function you have to do the accounting and to do the phone calls to the, the customer. And I mean, it's, it's really detailed. Um, and the firm that I talked to, which was, happened to be Morgan Stanley, said, for this size account, we're not, we, we're going to charge you, you know, 10 basis points to manage your, and we're currently paying 25 basis points, by the way, to manage your, to give you advice on your account. And if we have to go through a whole RFP process, we're going to lose money for the first year. So, because it's going to cost us so much to do the RFP. So they weren't even willing to bid. Um, so I, I, I just not sure that we need to go, I mean, if we want to have a mini RFP, that's fine. But again, we didn't do an RFP for the prison thing. We're going to spend a lot more money on that than we are on this.
Well, how, how, I mean, I'm asking staff, if we didn't put out an RFP, how would you go about doing this? I, our present investor services already said they wouldn't do what we're Our present investor services already said they wouldn't do what we, what we were talking about.
Right.
So how would you even know who's out there? I mean, how would you even get the word out?
That's what I said. You call US Bank, who is our trustee already, and ask them who else, who are there, what other advisors they have. One of them, by the way, is Morgan Stanley.
Okay.
And they are willing to do it. So we already know there are some, I would call it the same people. I call US Bank and say, who are your other trustees? We make, you know, five minute phone call to each one of those and say, here's our deal. You can send out the front part of this, which describes what we have and say to the people, here's our, here's the thing we'd like you to come and manage. You know, can you tell us what you, what fees you'd charge for this?
I mean, are you talking, I mean, you could also go to like, I'm just, I'm just going to top of my head here, but Vanguard, the, you know, companies like that. I mean.
I don't, I don't personally know whether Vanguard does this sort of thing, you know, Schwab and, and the brokerage firms do.
Yeah, it'd be Schwab, Merrill Lynch, those kinds of.
Yeah, the regular. fidelity Vanguard, that kind of stuff.
US Bank knows who they already have relationships with. I think we probably would need to do somebody that they already have a relationship with because they probably approve them. But, but I'm going to guess that many of the people you just named probably do have relationships with. So just make a few phone calls. You know, it's going to take somebody a couple hours to make a few phone calls.
Gloria, does that sound like something you could just pick up a phone and call someone at US Bank and say, say something like that or?
Well, I, I asked Pars previously about this directed trustee approach, you know, and if they knew other firms doing it. And Pars did not. That's back to their.
But it's not, I think that's the problem. It's not directed trustee. That, that's when we're giving them the direction. We're not doing that. This is literally, we want to hire an advisor, just like we have today, just a different advisor. And, and to have them give us probably more limited opinions because we're going to give them some tighter parameters. And as long as they believe that it meets the government's requirements for being a diversified portfolio and being prudent, then that's all we have to, that, that's, that's enough for us. But it doesn't, it isn't a directed program. It's just a regular old program that we just happen to hire an advisor that's willing to take, to implement our policies and tell us that they are, that they meet the appropriate, you know, guidelines for the government.
I, I would ask Jim, who's, who's still here, is, is that something where legally we can do what, what Director Jorgens is saying?
Well, there is, there is some risk that certain firms might consider this to be a, a directed approach. But I think, I think that issue could be explored with potential advisors. And, you know, one way of going about would be to find out, you know, who US Bank uses, who maybe some other fire districts or similar entities use, and then start asking those questions and see what the, the responses are and what sort of proposals we might get.
Well, it doesn't take a lot. I mean, we, and we can always change it again in the future if we're not happy with them, you know, this is, it's. At the moment, it appears there's at least one that is willing to take more direction than, and, and be willing to invest in different kinds of funds. Pars wasn't invested, willing to invest a single dollar in the S and P 500.
Right.
Well, that, that's not my definition of a directed fund. As a matter of fact, if they were refusing to invest in the largest single fund in the world, that seems a little weird to me. So, you know, and it's the most liquid and there are a lot of advantages to that particular thing. They just don't make as many fees on it. So it, it was very self-serving in my opinion, what they were doing. And so, but let's not throw any stones at them though, because there are others who are willing to do what they think is prudent. And what the government thinks is prudent on our behalf and not, not only doing what we asked them to do, but actually opining on what we're asking them to do, which takes all the burden off of us, by the way, for, you know, legally. And that's what we're asking them to do.
And that is the critical issue is under the government code that whomever is the advisor is willing to issue an opinion that the investment approach satisfies the prudent investor standard.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
And so is the direction then to go out and see, come up with?
I think you need to make a few phone calls and come up with, you know, a couple of them at least that we're, we think are willing to do, you know.
And you already have one.
We, we have one at least. Well, they said they actually had to get back and make sure that they were, they didn't have any conflicts of interest with us, which I don't believe they're going to, unless they're one of our lenders or something. So.
And one way of approaching this could be to start making some of those exploratory calls, see what happens, and then if necessary, bring this item back at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think it should come back to be a follow up for next meeting, who we talk to.
Yep, for sure.
Does that sound like something you could do? I mean.
So it was, was it Merrill Lynch? Is that the one that, and am I supposed to call them because that's happening?
So I, or I think Jim, you said you were willing to call and make some comment, some inquiries on these things if you, if they, if Gloria needed assistance on this.
Absolutely.
Morgan Stanley is the one that, that I had spoken to just because.
Morgan Stanley, but you call US Bank.
Well, US Bank and find out who their other advisors are that they work with on trust.
Right. Okay. And is it Morgan Stanley and where, which office? I think they have numerous.
I'll send her to you.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Well, actually John's got it. John Holtzman's got it. And so does Jim.
And I'm happy to assist with that.
Thank you, Jim.
It's not, it's, it's, it's a subsidiary. It's like Greystone, whatever. It's their OPEB advisory thing that manages like $44 billion of OPEB trusts, by the way, just so that they have a little bit of experience.
Yeah. And, and based on my research today, the, they do have a fair amount of experience in managing these types of, or being an advisor for these types of funds.
Yeah. Like I said, $44 billion. So that's, you know, our, our 15 million is going to get lost in the rounding here. So.
Will we like to open public comment?
Yes.
So public comment is open. And we do not have any hands raised, so we will close public comment.
I don't think we need a motion, so we can move on.
Yep.
So on to committee reports. The audit and joint fire prevention committee have not met since the last meeting in December. And so we can move to the Station 45 facility project.
Let me say something.
Well, we, we can both talk about it. We did meet, two of us, Chief Isaacs and Architect Alan Kawasaki met at, met at Station 45. We walked through the building. We discussed it with Alan Kawasaki. Threw some brainstorming with him. He told us, gave us some insight into the, the legal requirements for, for doing this type of building. And they're going to, they're, they're doing measurements and looking at the building and they're going to do as built and come up with a, a budget.
And one of the considerations that we had that I'm not sure he was aware of was we want to make sure we're facilitating the implementation of our new, you know, single role paramedics. And one of the things that I think had maybe been in the original thoughts and plans was to try to occupy the building at the same time it's being reconstructed. And he strongly recommended against that. I said, look, that's where they make these, I'll call them trailers for lack of a better word, housing units, whatever, whatever the formal word is. And we have several places we could park one of those. Could only put five or six people in it because it's only where they have to sleep. We can, we can use probably the office part of it, but not the rest of it, I think. And not the rest of the sleeping and, and whatever areas. And I think that he said it would be much more efficient to do it that way and just let the contractor go in and do his, his or her thing and be done as quickly as possible. He also, I think, gave it, personally, he was a terrific guy, great brainstormer, clearly knows his craft, you know, so that was terrific. I was very impressed with that. And, you know, I think he's really got a good handle on what's going to be best for us and what's going to work well. And, you know, his recommendation was to, you know, kind of like we're doing, keep putting Band-Aids on it until, until you have to replace the whole darn thing, but don't do that right now. Focus on replacing 41 before you think about replacing 45. And, and it costs a lot of money. And he's also the one that recommended probably breaking out the admin part of 41 and not rebuilding it right there, just permanently putting it, you know, in an office building someplace nearby, but not, not right onsite, because it just costs a lot of money to build office space. Costs us almost the same amount to build office space as it does fire stations and was a crazy number. And you can rent, and there's lots of office space to rent. So, perfect. Okay. And we could also, because we, we could have the trailers for the, the new people, the new, the two new paramedics that were, would be on site there soon. It wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be an, a barrier to being able to implement that program. Because they could be in the temporary housing.
And one other thing we, we did talk about briefly was especially for you, Director Hassler and maybe Director Romer, if you have visited the firehouses. I don't know if you've gotten that, that tour. Did you do that?
Yeah.
You did all of them. Okay.
No, not all of them. No.
41, 45, I mean?
Forty, forty-five, yes. In downtown.
Yeah. Okay. So, okay, good. Well, we just got to check on that, make sure. All right.
Good.
All right. We'll open public comment for the committee reports. And we do not have any attendees.
That's great.
Future, requests for future agenda items.
I think we already know a number of them that we put on here. And is there something else we? Oh, well, eventually in the next meeting or two, we should talk about the standards of coverage.
Yeah, it's on the priorities. Well, I guess that's where.
But also, I think we got a comment from Jonathan too.
It wasn't, it was.
Last month.
Internal email.
Yep. Okay.
Just like to make the, when we're ready, I'd like to make the adjournment.
Okay.
All right.
You ready? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in the memory of our 39th President Jimmy Carter, who passed away recently.
And I would like to add that the 24 people that died in LA in the fires and probably the commemoration of Martin Luther King Day.
Okay. So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Romer, I'll second.
Okay. And the time is 9:59. Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Dex?
Aye.
Director Jorgens? Director Romer?
Aye.
President Hassler?
Aye.
Okay. Good job.
Thank you, everyone.